Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Today is Monday, September 25th, and this is the regular City Council meeting. If I can have everyone stand for the pledge to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have quite a big agenda this evening. If there's any member out there in the public who would like to speak to a particular matter, please fill out a card at the back and submit up to staff up here in the front. Thank you so much. May I have a roll call, please? Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Ms. Christensen, Mr. Gengona?
Here.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Present.
Ms. Manalo?
Present.
Mr. Sylvester?
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. We're going to start off with a couple of presentations. The first presentation is going to be proclaiming October, the month of October, as Filipino-American History Month in Daly City. And I have Ms. Nerissa Fernandez, the Head of Global Corp Affairs and Public Relations of the Filipino Channel, here to accept this presentation. And I would ask my colleague, Vice Mayor Justin Manalo, if you would kindly present the presentation, please.
Thank you so much. The proclamation states for Filipino-American History Month in Daly City, October 2017. Whereas the City of Daly City commemorates Filipino-American History Month each October, a month-long observance to honor and share the rich tapestry of Filipino-American history and culture. And whereas this year, the entire Daly City community is invited to Filipino-American History Month celebration at Marchbank Park, October 14, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., a day filled with music, dance, crafts, fashion, and Filipino cuisine. And whereas October's significance as Filipino-American History Month is due to the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States when October 18, 1587, Luzones Indios came ashore from the Spanish galleon Nuestra Señora de Esperanza and landed at what is now Morro Bay, California. And whereas Daly City has the highest concentration of Filipino-Americans of any municipality in the United States, Filipino-Americans comprise 35% of the city's population. And whereas California is home to nearly half of the Filipino population in the United States, with more than 1,470 Filipinos calling the Golden State home, according to the 2010 census, and is the location of many vibrant Filipino communities, including those in Daly City, Los Angeles, San Francisco, Stockton, Vallejo, Delano, San Diego, and Salinas, among others. Therefore, our Mayor Glenn Sylvester and members of the City Council of the City of Daly City do hereby proclaim October 2017 Filipino-American History Month, signed sealed by the mayor and the City Council. So, thank you so much.
Ms. Fernandez?
Thank you very much.
Oh, come closer, come closer to the mic.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Manalo, and good evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and esteemed members of the City Council, and to everybody here. I hope you can all hear me, okay? It's a very good time to actually live and work in one of the best cities to work and live in, here in the San Francisco Bay Area. We are very grateful to the City Council and all the officers of the City Hall of Daly City for giving us a very warm welcome when we moved here in January and when we had our inauguration of our office back in April. Now, we are very privileged and honored to partner with the Committee for the Filipino History Month of Daly City. We're going to celebrate the festival at Marchbank Park for the very first time, as Vice Mayor Justin Manalo said. We are very excited for this because we are, you know, providing a lot of entertainment. We work for the Filipino Channel, which is a TV network. We're going to bring in some of our stars. We're going to raise the awareness for the event. We're going to cooperate with the whole, what's this, Daly City to make it one of the best events in the San Francisco Bay Area. So again, thank you very much to Joe Curran and to everybody in the committee for working with TFC, being very patient with us in making this event possible. Thank you so much, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. It's a pleasure to have TFC, ABS, CBN, back here in Daly City. And I can definitely vouch for the things that you all do for the community. Thank you so much, and if I can get my wife off the channel and watching all the time, but thank you so much, it's all good. All right. All right, the next item on the agenda is a presentation proclaiming Fire Prevention Month for the month of October. Do we, oh, there he is, Inspector Clyde Peterson. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good, fine, thank you.
All right. I don't read as fast as the Vice Mayor because I can't really see, so I'm only going to read a few of the lines, whereas, every particular whereas on this proclamation is important. But I'm just going to read a few of them. Whereas, the City of Daly City, California, and the North County Fire Authority are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Daly City. And, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes and locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire. And, home fires kill thousands of people in the United States. Each year, according to the National Fire Prevention Association, and fire departments in the United States respond to over 370,000 home fires. Therefore, the members of the City Council and I do hereby proclaim October 2017 as Fire Prevention Month throughout the city, and I urge all people of Daly City to plan, how many exits?
At least two.
Very good. From each room of your home with a path to the outside from each exit. Please support the many public safety activities and efforts of the North County Fire Authority during Fire Prevention Month 2017. And I'd like to present this presentation to Clyde Peterson, one of our fire safety inspectors. Sir?
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, thank you so much for this proclamation tonight. October is obviously a very busy month for the fire department. Fire departments here in Daly City, all over the United States. October's Fire Prevention Month, and our firefighters are going to be out there in full force. I want to just let you know some of the activities we're doing. Our firefighters will be visiting every single elementary school in the City of Daly City, as well as Pacifica and Brisbane, teaching about this year's NPA theme, which is Every Second Counts, Plan Two Ways Out, encouraging the children to develop a family escape plan that once they're outside of their home, all the family members re-meet and meet to make sure everybody is out of the house. We'll be doing that in all three of our cities. Another thing we're going to be doing is our annual Fire Service Day open houses. So, it's going to be the second Saturday in October, that's going to be Saturday, October the 14th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we will have three Daly City fire stations open for this event. We'll have Fire Station 93, which is the Bay Shore Fire Station over on Martin Street, our main fire station, the Ceremony Station, Station 94 on Geller and Wembley, and also Station 95 on Lincoln and Edmond. In addition, we'll have Brisbane Station 81 open, it's on Bay Shore Boulevard, and the Lindemar Fire Station, Station 72 in Pacifica. So, those are the five stations that'll be open. We'll be having firefighter demonstrations, obviously teaching about this year's NPA theme, showing off all of our fire equipment, medical equipment, and of course, trying to educate the public about fire safety. So, we encourage everybody to tell their friends and neighbors, come out to the fire stations, October the 14th, visit us and stop by. It's really a fun event, we do these every year. And so again, we thank you for recognizing this and making this a serious matter, and we hope that all of our Daly City residents do that and help educate them about fire safety this year. Thank you very much.
Inspector Preston, thank you so much. I said Preston. That's the real name, it's not Peterson, you should have told me that. All right. Moving right ahead, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the last council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next item is the approval of the consent calendar. Approval of the agenda. I'm sorry, the next item is the approval of agenda.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Next item is the consent agenda. Does any of my colleagues want to entertain any items on the, well, I do have some cards here, but I'll leave it up to my colleagues first. Any particular items?
You mean to pull from the consent?
Yes.
Three.
Number three. Okay, anything further? I'm going to request to pull items number one, two. We have a request from the Vice Mayor for item number three. I'd also like to pull item number eight and number 10, because I do have some cards for...
Ms. Mayor, with the exception of those items, could I move for approval of the rest, the balance of the consent agenda?
Motion on the floor to approve the remaining items other than the ones mentioned.
Second.
First and second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, those items have been pulled. We'll first start off with item number one, and that's commending Mr. Patrick Sweetland on the occasion of his retirement. Mr. Sweetland, please.
Now it's on the record. Now it's on the record.
Now it's on the record. Mr. Sweetland, I have a resolution that I'm going to read, and for those of you who were not here for the previous meeting, our city manager did make some information available as to Mr. Sweetland's career. However, in looking at this, I feel like there's nothing I can leave out here. So what I would like to do, Mr. Sweetland, is read this resolution pertaining to you. Whereas, after a successful tenure working for Assemblyman Lou Pappan, Patrick Sweetland started his employment with the City of Daly City on March 8, 1987, as Administrative Assistant III in the Department of Public Works, heralding the beginning of what would become a 30-year career. And whereas, Patrick spent most of his first six years in the Department of Public Works, including stints in the Electrical/Billing Inspector/Supervisor and Storm Water Program Supervisor, before joining the city manager's office as Senior Management Analyst on July 1, 1994, where he oversaw Daly City's Transportation System Management Program, the Solid Waste Diversion Program, the BFI Franchise Agreement, and served as the General Program Coordinator of the San Mateo Countywide National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, that's a lot, NPDES, Storm Water Management Program. And whereas, on December 11, 1995, just 16 months after sailing into his role in the city manager's office, Patrick was appointed the Acting Director of the Department of Water and Waste Water Resources. And on June 10, 1996, Patrick became the Director of the Department, a position he held for more than 21 years. And whereas, Patrick assisted the Governor's Office of Emergency Services in the recovery efforts related to the Northridge earthquake of January 17, 1994, earning accolades from Governor Pete Wilson in the form of a certificate of merit on the two-year anniversary of the earthquake. And whereas, Patrick became a regional leader in all matters related to water delivery and conservation during his tenure with Daly City. And on December 12, 2002, he presided over the last meeting of the Board of Directors of the Bay Area Water Users Association, leading to the establishment of a new regional agency, the Bay Area Water Supply and Conservation Agency. And whereas, among Patrick's greatest achievements was the successful completion of the North San Mateo County Sanitation District's first tertiary water treatment system, which went online August 26, 2004, and provides recycled water for the irrigation of four nearby golf courses and Daly City parks and landscape medians, making a conjunctive use agreement for groundwater storage and recovery a reality by 2014. A landmark agreement between the City of Daly City and San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, City of San Bruno, and Cal Water. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of Daly City and myself, as the mayor, that it does hereby commend Patrick Sweetland, master of... Did somebody really write this? Master of acronyms.
That's he is. He is the master of acronyms.
And purveyor of fun.
There he is.
For his more than 30 years of service to the City of Daly City. Be it further resolved that the City Council extends its best wishes to Patrick as he pursues, pursues a well-deserved retirement. I hereby certify the foregoing to be a true copy of this res, I'm going to assign this, Mr. Sweetland, but thank you so much, sir. Before you share some of your acronyms with us, Mr. Sweetland, I'm going to open it up to my colleagues for any comments first. No, Mr. Sweetland, you got the floor.
Well, I'm the mayor and members of the city council, thank you very much. I, earlier you said that I was always good at making presentations on difficult items, so forgive me as I am attempting to struggle with comments before you. I'm very, very appreciative for your very kind and generous comments. Many may not know, but for the exception of five months when I worked in the state Capitol, my entire career has been spent in Daly City. The first six years was in Assemblyman Pappan's district office at Ceremony Plaza, and in March, came to work in Daly City. If there's one thing that's been the hallmark of this organization, and I appreciate the compliments on projects, I appreciate Pat's compliments on the projects, but it's always been and will always be a team effort within Daly City. A team within the organization, a team with the elected, and most importantly, a team with the citizens of Daly City. And over those 30-plus years, I have found that in many of my outreach with the community, we may not always have agreed, but the community was never disagreeable, and we found a way to get answers. And with that, it's just an important component to just to say thank you. It's been a great ride. It's been a distinct honor and privilege to serve not only the organization and the City Council, but also the residents within the community. And for that, I'm going to have a lot, a lot of fond memories, and I appreciate that. Want to recognize the one thing that if they, people have been asking me from a management style, let me just suggest, I know what I know, but more importantly, I know what I don't, but I surround myself with people that do. So tonight, Tom Piccolati, who will be taking over as Acting Director when I leave, is in the audience, our Collection Distribution System Manager, Joshua Cosglove, our Planning and Maintenance Manager, and Greg Kraus, our Chief of Operations, are just three of upwards of 69 examples of people who know more. It's been a privilege to work with them, and thank you very, very much for your comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweetland. All right, next item on the agenda, we have another retiree for a resolution. I'd like to call up Ms. Laura Ing. Ms. Ing? Oh, come on up. Oh, I remember you.
Hello, everyone.
Ms. Ing. We have, this is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Daly City commending you on the occasion of your retirement as well. Whereas Laura Ing, you retired already?
I did.
Wow, this should, okay. On June 16, 2017, concluding a devoted 14 years of service with the City of Daly City, and whereas Laura began her career in the Finance and Administrative Services in Department in 2003 as an Account Clerk I, in the Utility Billing Division, and was later promoted to Account Clerk II. And whereas Laura was a key member of the Utility Billing Division, providing superior service in the call center, cashier's office, and providing a key utility billing functions, including utility bill preparation, account collections, and reconciliations on over 23,000 utility accounts for water, garbage, and... Is there an extra chair in the room? Ma'am? Ma'am? The lady right there with the cane, there's a seat right up here in the front. Come on up here in the front, come on. Ma'am, you with the glasses. Yes, you. There's a seat up here in the front if you'd like to sit down.
Come sit over here.
Come on. Okay. Yeah, there's one up here in the front. You okay? Oh, I thought you, oh, that's the stripe on your pants, okay. We're going to have fun tonight. But come on up in here. All right, there you go. All right. Ms. Ing, see, look at that. She's retiring and she's still, you know, okay.
I love people.
I know, I realized that when I met you, when I first came on board, and, you know, you're one of the reasons why I like to come here, so, thank you. Whereas Laura assisted in the implementation of the Hanson Utility Billing System and assisted in various projects, and whereas Laura made recommendations to improve operational efficiency and simplify work procedures and consistently demonstrated her excellent customer service skills and willingness to offer assistance where help was needed. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Daly City, and I, that it does hereby commend Laura Ing for her many years of dedicated and outstanding service to the Daly City community, and extends its very best wishes to Laura on the occasion of her retirement. Congratulations, Ms. Ing, and thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. I don't know what I want.
Okay. Would you like to say anything to us?
Well, actually, I just want to say to the Daly City residents, it was always a pleasure helping everyone, and I kind of miss it a little bit, but not really. I get to spend time with my family and my grandchildren, and that's where my heart is. So, it was a pleasure helping and serving, and I would just want to thank the council very much.
Good job, thank you very much.
For this recognition.
Great job, Ms. Ing, and I promise you, you're going to have a nice certificate coming in the mail.
All right, I'll look forward to that.
All right, so thank you again and congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, thank you. All right, the next item we've pulled was item number three on the consent agenda. That was, oh, okay, the adoption of composite summary memorandum of understanding and salary schedule between the City of Daly City and the Daly City firefighters, Local 1879. And I'm going to, I do have one card on this, but I'm going to turn it over to the Vice Mayor, because the Vice Mayor requested to be pulled. So, I guess we allow you, Ms. Malpe...
If you want me to give background, otherwise I don't have to, unless you just want to say something about it.
Ms. Martell, how does that usually work? Do we usually have staff?
Generally, when the council pulls a report, we provide the report for the benefit of the public.
Okay.
But if there is just a comment that you'd like to make, or if there is a question about the item, you can direct that to the HR director.
Okay, sure.
Ladies and gentlemen, at the lectern, we do have our HR Director, Ms. Shawna Malpe. Ladies and gentlemen, at the lectern, we do have our HR director, Ms. Shawna Malpe. Vice mayor.
You can provide a brief summary, so people in the audience as well as watching has some brief information.
Absolutely. Can you hear me? I'll be as brief as possible, given the audience here tonight. My name is Shawna Malpe. I'm the Director of Human Resources, and tonight, staff is asking that council adopt by resolution the MOU that we recently reached with the local firefighters, Local 1879. Under council's authority and direction, we did reach a two-year agreement with this union, and I'm happy to give the details, but it was a very cordial process, and staff very much is thankful for the council and for the union for their collaboration in this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Malpe. Vice mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to pull this and say that, you know, our firefighters have always done what they could to keep our community safe. And as mentioned earlier, in our, the fire prevention, they're out there in our schools, they're out there making sure businesses, homes, and that, and especially during the weather that we had recently around all these. And so I just wanted to pull it and say thank you to the, our firefighters and for their commitment to Daly City and that it's well-deserved.
Thank you, vice mayor. Any other comments for staff? Okay, before we take a vote to approve this item, I do have one card, and I'd like to call up Ms. Pamela Di Giovanni, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'd just like to say thank you very much for recognizing the fighting firefighters. As a firefighter's daughter, you guys have been supportive most of the time when they've been out there, especially you three, the fighting so hard for us and never complaining, and it's about community, and that finally, they're getting, I don't know the details yet, but hopefully, it sounds like a raise and well-deserved raise of their risk in their lives, as you know, on a daily basis. They're being exposed to communicable diseases as paramedics, and they have that Engine 95 that's just sitting there. Hopefully, that'll be something that'll be revived, and they'll need the personnel to go with it, because currently, we have fifteen on duty a day, and I know that's being worked on as well, but this is a step forward, so I commend you on that, and thank you from the bottom of my heart, and that the rest of us, when we dial that 911 for our firefighters, will know that they'll, they and their families will be able to go home to their families safely as well, because it does put them at risk when they're working a lot of overtime and stretched so thin. So I'll, thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Pam, thank you so much for your comments. There are no other cards on this particular issue. So with that being said, this is a consent agenda item. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Should we do all one, I'm sorry, two, one, two, and three?
Well, I know one and two was the, okay. Madam City Attorney, do you think that's okay? One, two, and three? The first two are the retirement resolutions?
Yes, but we plan to roll all.
Oh, of course. All right, so if I would entertain a motion for items one, two, and three.
So move.
Second.
First, second, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gingona.
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye.
Okay, thank you so much.
What was that?
Okay. The next item is item number eight that I had requested to be pulled. Ms. O'Bell? Since I, Ms. O'Bell, since I had requested this item to be pulled, this is for the audience out there. Item number eight pertains to the Community Development Block Grant and Home Programs to which funds were allocated from the monies that we received the last year. There's not gonna be any changes, because the money has already been spent, okay? So I had requested this item to be pulled to, to basically get further information in a couple of the categories. So Ms. O'Bell, you wouldn't have to give the full report, okay? I just have a question on a couple, okay? I realize how the money was spent in the various services to include housing, public services, public facilities, and economic development. If I can direct your attention under public services to bullet point number six. Two-hundred-and-thirty-one households composed of eight-hundred-and-six persons received affordable legal services particularly relating to landlord-tenant issues. The question I have on that is, do we have a breakdown as to the landlord-tenant issues? You know, what they pertain to, whether it was rent control, just cause evictions?
It generally has to do with evictions.
Evictions?
Yes.
And any type of evictions that you get further in detail, like just cause evictions or?
Generally, the evictions have to do with rent increases.
Rent increases.
And legal, this is legal aid, and they are assisting these households in determining whether the rent increases were legally levied or, and whether they gave proper noticing and that kind of thing.
And how about bullet point number eight? Six households composed, comprised of fifteen persons had fair housing discrimination cases filed for them.
This is the activities that are carried out by Project Sentinel, who provides a variety of fair housing activities, and specifically, these six households were most likely already living in a unit in Daly City, and they might have been in a dispute with the landlord over something like installation of accessibility improvements, like handrails and accessible showers, that kind of thing.
Okay. Anything, okay, fair housing discrimination, so sound like mostly comprised of ADA issues?
Sometimes familial status, sometimes race and ethnicity.
Okay, Ms. O'Bell, that's all the questions I have. Does any of my colleagues have any additional questions for Ms. O'Bell?
I do.
Vice mayor.
Yeah, thank you for pulling the item now. I do have a question on the economic development. It said workshop and classes provided to thirty-five microenterprise owners. So how was that facilitated, and where were these small businesses located?
This was the activities carried out by Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center as our consultant, and they carried out a variety of workshops and classes at Dozier, as well as at libraries and community centers. They also provided one-on-one consulting. Of the, I don't have the exact number in front of me, but of the thirty-five clients that they served in sixteen, seventeen, about, I'm gonna say about seventy percent were Daly City residents or businesses domiciled in Daly City. They did attract a lot of their clients from adjacent cities as well, and you may be aware that this year, we were not funding them anymore because of funding shortages. Thank you.
All right, any other questions for Ms. O'Bell? Ms. O'Bell, I don't have any further questions, and neither does council. Did you want to add anything or have anything?
No. Overall, this is an annual report for the approximately one-point-three million dollars we receive every year from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to carry out housing and community development activities. This report is required as a condition of that funding.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bell. All right, so being that there's no further questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the expenditure for...
Still moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Madam City Attorney, do I need a roll call on this one?
I would need a roll call.
Okay, we're gonna do a roll call on all the consent items this evening. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gingona.
Aye.
Mr. Buenaventura.
Aye.
Ms. Manalo.
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester.
Aye. Thank you, Ms. O'Bell. All right, moving on to item number ten.
What I'd like to do, we do have many cards on this item, but before we go into the cards, I think the public here who's here tonight is mostly on item number ten. As I would like to make mention again, we are not making a decision on rent control. So with that being said, I'm gonna turn it over to the city manager to provide a staff report of this particular item. Ms. Martell, did you wanna do it from there or come up here?
Well, Mr. Mayor, actually, I'm going to have Ms. O'Bell present the report tonight.
Okay.
We did have a, just by way of introduction, though, we did have a council committee meeting relative to this particular item. We reviewed with a council committee, which included Vice Mayor Manalo and Councilmember Judith Christensen, the content of the assessment of fair housing. They both spent a great deal of time with staff going through the assessment and reviewing the issues that Ms. O'Bell is going to outline tonight, and at the conclusion of the committee meeting, supported the staff moving forward with placing this item before the council and making the recommendation that we have provided you tonight. So I say that by way of the fact that two council members did look at the details in-depth prior to supporting staff's recommendation that is before you tonight. And with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. O'Bell.
Thank you, Ms. Martell. Ms. O'Bell?
Before you tonight, for your consideration, is the assessment of fair housing. This document is a tool to analyze fair housing challenges and develop goals and priorities for addressing fair housing barriers. Preparation of this document is a requirement of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for all jurisdictions who receive HUD funding, such as Community Development Block Grant and Home Funds. HUD encourages regional collaboration, and to that end, Daly City joined a county-wide collaborative effort, which was led by the County of San Mateo, who retained a consultant, BBC Research and Consulting, who helped with coordination of community outreach, collection and analysis of data, and help with the development of priorities and objectives. Each participating jurisdiction in this process developed its own goals and strategies based on their local needs. Daly City's goals and strategies are attached to your staff report as exhibit two and were reviewed by the Affordable Housing Committee. The assessment of fair housing, the assessment of fair housing was prepared in accordance with HUD regulations, and to that end, the draft assessment of fair housing was made available for public review and comment for forty-five days beginning on August 1st. Based on that review, a variety of letters and comments were submitted calling for various policies and programs to be implemented that would protect housing security to lower-income renters. Specifically, I'll go through the five basic policies that were requested in the public comment process. One, adopt rent stabilization and just cause tenant protection policies. Two, undertake a data gathering initiative that would require landlords to submit notices of rent increases to the local government, the city. Three, adopt a rule that gives tenants first right of refusal to purchase their buildings when those buildings are offered for sale. Four, require landlords to provide relocation assistance. And five, adopt a Section 8 nondiscrimination ordinance. HUD regulations pertaining to the assessment of fair housing require that jurisdictions can either decline or accept comments. We received the majority of the comments after August 24th at a point where there was not enough time for a full and comprehensive council consideration of the various requests made in these comments. In other jurisdictions, specifically the County of San Mateo, the City of San Mateo, and the City of Redwood City, the jurisdiction had previously gone through a thorough process to evaluate and discuss initiatives like rent stabilization and just cause eviction. For example, in the City of San Mateo, the City Council held six council meetings between nineteen, 2015 and 16, which specifically focused on affordable housing, including a comprehensive housing, comprehensive housing forum. Their, the City Council of San Mateo appointed a housing task force that met seven times in 2015 and 16 to provide recommendations for council consideration. In Daly City, we have never gone through such a process. This is a process that would involve all stakeholders, including tenant advocacy groups, as well as real estate ownership interests such as SAMCAR. Therefore, when staff met with the Affordable Housing Committee on September 11th to seek direction on a response to these comments, therefore, we met with them in order to get a response. The committee didn't believe the city had the standing and had not completed a critical evaluation process, didn't have a process behind itself to reject these comments without a more focused and informed review. And they also did not believe they had the information and input from stakeholders that would be needed to implement the requested policies and programs. So the committee directed staff to accept the comments and indicate in the final assessment of fair housing that the city would go through a process of consideration to determine the merits of various renter-protection initiatives that were identified in the public comments. And I will emphasize that the assessment of fair housing before you tonight, as drafted, indicates that the city will go through a process of consideration, not that the city will adopt any of these policy initiatives. To decline to accept these comments without a review process could result in a protest of the legitimacy of the assessment of fair housing on the part of the advocates that submitted comments, and potentially put over a million dollars per year currently coming to the city through the Block Grant and Home Program at risk. Therefore, the assessment of fair housing that is before you tonight states that the city will go through a process of review and consideration, and that is what we will, we could do. We would work with the City Council to determine the best process for evaluating and studying these recommended policy initiatives. It could be one or more city council meetings, potentially study sessions, or a committee meeting. This is a process we would need to determine. As we identified the best process for review and consideration of the requested measures, we would definitely be concerned about proper notification and outreach to all stakeholder, stakeholders, including SAMCAR and then the various tenant advocacy groups that submitted the public comments. As indicated in the assessment of fair housing as drafted, the review of the requested policies and programs could take up to eighteen months. And with that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. O'Bell. Any questions from my colleagues?
I have some, but I'd like to hear from the public first, if you wanna...
Okay, Mr. Buenaventura does have some comments. I think it'd be a good idea if we start going through the cards from the public and hear what the public has to say. You've all had an opportunity to hear the report, and now I would like to open it up for public comment at this time, and then you'll receive comments from the council. I'm just thinking if I should hold my questions for later, but, all right, let's, let's have the public. Now, I'm gonna, please be advised, the public has two minutes to provide their comments, and we're gonna hold you to that two minutes, because we have a lot of cards here, folks. And so please, be cognizant of that, and with that, we will move ahead. So the first card I have on this matter is of Ms. Gina Zari. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.
All right. Was there more cards? Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us here tonight. We, I think, I think the important thing that I want to say upfront is that we respectfully request that you remove items 10 through 15 from the recommendation of the Fair Housing Plan. Those items are, have been proven unsuccessful. They don't, they don't fix the affordable housing situation we have in this county, and quite frankly, the mere discussion, entertaining conversation, studying will lead to market instability that we do not want to see in this city. We've seen it happen in other cities, and I respectfully request that you remove items 10 through 15 from the Fair Housing Plan, staff recommendations. I'd just like to make a note that I think that everybody here that would raise their hand will agree that we'd like to remove 10 through 15 from the staff recommendation, and that's the most important thing. I think that... And that's the most important thing I think that I would like to get across. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card we have is a Mina Young, and after Ms. Young, we have a Casper Leong. So, Mina, is it Mina Young? Are you here, Mina? Coming up? Okay, and next we have a Casper Leong, and then a Husei Lieng. Are you Mina?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, you have to...
I am a homeowner, and my father and I both own each single-family house. If you have rent control, there's no way that, my father just had dementia, and if I take care of him, there's no way that I can take care of the tenants. So we will, we could have rented the house, but if you have rent control, we will not do that because with tenant protection and all that, my house will be given to the tenant. I will have no way of getting it back. And I have to, you know, in a lot of cities, they have those just cause eviction, you have to pay out, you know, money to get my honey, my house back, and I have to take care of the damages and all of that. So it's the rent control and just cause is the best way to kill housing. Okay, single-family houses with small homeowners is not going to be willing to take that risk of losing their house to somebody. So please do not consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Leong?
Yeah.
Okay, and then we have a Husei, Husein Lieng? Husein? Hushin? 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 Okay. Yan Pe Chen will be next. Yang Pe? Yang, okay. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing this right. I just want to get folks right. Chin Hong Lu? Chin Hong Lu? Okay. A Tom Chavet, are you here? Tom Chavet? Daly City? Tom? Okay. Is he, okay, not, not right now, sir. Not right now. Okay, so Mr. Leong, I apologize. Sir, go ahead.
Some people put all of responsibility to landlord. They think landlords make all of the problem. It's not true. Take a look, San Francisco, because unfair rent control, more than 40,000 houses withdraw from the rental market as a result. The rent in San Francisco is much, much higher. If you don't want the, if you don't want Daly City's housing as bad as San Francisco, please don't put the rent control here. All of the rent-controlled city are one Daly City. The rent are much higher. Rent control can hurt both sides, hurt landlord and tenants. Please low, please low rent control in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leong. Mr. Tony Chavet? Hi, Tony, how are you? I met you earlier.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. My name is Tony Chavet. I own, a property owner in Daly City. I am against rent control because property values will go down. There are a lot of bad things with rent control that is happening in San Francisco now. I'm sure you're all aware of. Therefore, I don't support rent control, and I just wanted to let you know that. I think more affordable housing would be better for the city. You create more supply, less demand, prices will go down. When you, when you implement some type of rent control, there's no going back. You know, landlords will be caught up with, you know, a lot of expense with property taxes and insurance, mortgage. There are a lot of responsibilities that landlords have. So therefore, I just wanted to state to this board that I am strictly against rent control. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chavet. Okay, the next we have is a Malcolm Lee, and after Mr. Lee, we have a Christina Lee. Mr. Malcolm, sir. And next we have Christina Lee. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Madam Vice Mayor and esteemed council members. I'm a grassroots housing provider, so-called landlord. The housing supply and rent are all market-driven. During the downturn, there was a lot of vacancy that you might have noticed, noticed, and also the, you probably will see a lot of signs saying, "We offer free rent if you will sign one-year lease." So the rent sometimes goes up, the rent sometimes goes down. So if you look back in the downturn, the, some of the homeowners, they even lost their house because not only paying the bills, there's a lot of upkeep that you have to maintain the house. And having a house is a huge burden. It's not that the, having a house is American dream. I get it. But also, it comes with a lot of responsibility where you pay bills, where you maintain the upkeep of the house. But if you were to look at the news, you probably noticed that the rents are falling throughout various cities because some, some companies, they are starting to, some jobs are going away from California, so rents are starting to fall. And once you have rent control, let's look around, look at San Francisco, Oakland, and Berkeley, where they have very strict rent control and rents are not cheap there. So you always will see the unintended consequences where you will have landlords take away, withdraw their, their housing supply from, from the, from the inventory, so you don't have any inventory for any tenants to rent. And at the same times, when you have rent control, the, from time to time, we have bad apple. We have bad tenants, it's very hard to get rid of, and you probably will hear the nightmare. We have a movie about Pacific Heights, right? Everyone has seen that in the, in the 90s. So when you have that kind of bad tenants, it's very hard to get rid of. The history tells us that. Okay, so I'm completely against rent control.
Your time is up. Thank you so much for your comments, sir. Okay, we have Ms. Lee, and then we have a Michael Chang, and a Stephanie Yee afterwards, please. Good evening, Ms. Lee.
Good evening. My name is Christina Lee. I was a longtime Daly City resident, living, lived here for almost 20 years. Before then, I lived in San Francisco. I hated Daly City that time because it's so foggy, and I said, "I never live here." But since I got married and I moved in, I love Daly City. And I was able to, you know, save some money, you know, both, you know, we have a business here, and almost business is almost 20 years too. We still have a business here, and I was able to buy some properties, rental properties in Daly City. And we were able to rent a business here in Daly City, but our rent here, our rental unit is always below market, market rents. We do not raise a lot. I don't know you familiar, back in 2001, the rents high, for example, one bedroom was went from 900 something to like 1350, and then it went down, it flipped for 10 years until like 2010, 2011, '12, and it went, it went down for like 1125, it's just flipped for almost 10 years. If you look at the Daly City like 20-year cycle, it was flat and go up for a year or two and go back down for 10 years. And I see like what happened in this past few years, the rents are creeping, like just a subprime in demands. My concern about this is not the rent control, not how much rents go up in the city compared with San Francisco. Just, our concern is just call eviction, what it can bring to our neighborhoods and our beloved tenants who are living there for a long time. I hope you vote no to item 10. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lee. Okay, Mr. Michael Chang? Mr. Chang? Mr. Chang? Yes, sir. And after you, we have a Stephanie Yee. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. My name is Michael Chang. I'm 15-year experience of real estate professional on Daly City. Now, I come here today, I have to against the rent control thing. Look at that, seven years ago, Daly City's single-family house average price 500,000. But today, market price 1.2 million. So which is, you know, of course, Daly City like it. But this is a reality, you cannot buy the house today asking for seven years ago, "Hey, give me the house 500,000." You had paid a market price 1.2 million now. So same rules apply to the rent, random market. You know what I mean? Like because we as, we as an agent, we have a lot of experience, supply-demand rule. Same to, same to the random market. It's like, random market is like the fish in the ocean. When the weather go up, the fish go up. When the market go down, the fish go down, you know? You cannot control this. Nobody controlled it. Only the supply-demand rule controlled that market price, the random price, the housing Look at our neighboring San Francisco, 40-year experience of, very experience of the grand bar rent control city. Today, look at there, very messy, stay out of, you know, out of, out of control of housing crisis. The rent is terrible. Everybody find a way, you know, try to, try to fight the rent control rules. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Bye-bye.
Stephanie Yee, and then we have a Tom Thompson. Ms. Yee, welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council people. I am not a homeowner, and I would like to think that I represent the younger generation. I'm 26, a recent college graduate, and I want to let you guys know that I completely oppose rent control because of the competition in housing that this will cause. We see that in San Francisco, the housing is raising up to, there are about $2,000 per month per room in the city, and I think that this is a terrible idea because it only leads to further gentrification of our city that we don't currently have in Daly City. And as of far, Daly City represents a beacon of hope for the people who are trying to get away from the high housing costs in San Francisco, and so I just wanted to put out this viewpoint of a tenant who is opposing rent control. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember and staff.
You Mr. Thompson?
I am.
How you doing, sir?
Just fine, thank you.
Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. I see you got some paperwork for us, so...
I do, yes.
We want to, we want to get the paperwork first before you talk.
With supporting evidence, yes, thank you.
All right.
Where's the paperwork?
It's coming.
As noted in your staff... Wait, 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 I want to give you a full two minutes. We got to get the paperwork. Let me know when you're ready.
Okay. Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
We're ready.
Thank you. So am I.
Okay.
As noted in your staff report, Daly City is a superstar with the most ethnically diverse housing of AFH reporting jurisdictions. Fair housing is not a problem in Daly City. So it was shocking to me that the proposed language in the Assessment for Fair Housing, the AFH, places San Francisco-style rent control as a priority for consideration by Daly City. Now, there are over 36,000 vacant units in San Francisco because property owners refuse to deal with the onerous and expensive requirements of rent control elements in your own staff report in this matter. That's 17% of rental units in San Francisco. If rental, if rent control were eliminated, over 36,000 rental units would be instantly available in San Francisco. Paradoxically, eliminating rent control would solve our housing shortage overnight. More shocking tonight is the policy matters that, of this magnet sued, were included within Daly City's AHL official policy priorities to be submitted to HUD. Rent eviction, relocation, purchase, purchase rights controls are extreme measures. Support for such severe property controls are serious public policy matters. Policies that severely restrict property rights of this magnitude were included inside a staff report within your consent agenda tonight. This is wrong for Daly City. This is not the Daly City we know and trust. Please put a stop to this. Please do the right thing. Remove tonight all references to rent eviction, relocation, purchase rights controls, and related policy priorities of Daly City in the AFH report to HUD. That's items 10 through 15. I have submitted supporting documents for the statistics that I've given you. Any questions?
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next we have a Jeremy Russwan, and after Jeremy, we have Gloria Leong. Jeremy? Hi, come on up, Jeremy. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak. So my name's Jeremy, I'm a realtor in the city, and so I deal with rent control situations a lot. I just recently sold three properties in the Sunset that were all tenant-occupied, and they sold for about 20% less than what they would have went for if they had been vacant. And so when you have these type of situations with rent control, you would have less tax revenue for the city because a lot of buyers don't want to buy tenant-occupied property. It's already been said by many others already that it is a contributing factor to the high rents in the city because it creates less inventory. That's pretty simple. When I was 17, my parents and I were actually evicted from the house that I grew up in because we lost it to the bank because we, you know, were in foreclosure during the recession. And, you know, so we had to rent a smaller house in a less desirable area, and we survived that. When I was 22, I saved up and bought a house in South City and then lived in the garage and rented out the rooms upstairs, and that was way back in 2016. So it's not like young people can't make it if they try. And you really have to be economically illiterate to think that rent control is a good idea. I mean, it's failed in every California city that has been tried in. There's not a single city with rent control that's affordable, so it's pretty cut and dry that this is a disaster. So thank you.
Okay, Ms. Gloria Leong, and then we have Alsa Rye-Johnson? Johnson? Okay, great. Ms. Leong?
Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria. I just want to say no rent control in Daly City. Look at Oakland, Berkeley, and Alameda, they have the rent control, but it cannot solve the problem. It only make it more worse. So I hope Daly City has no rent control, and there will, if you have, there will be more houses unit out of the rental market. Please say no rent control. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson?
Hi there.
It's Alyssa.
Alyssa Reese Johnson.
Okay.
Just like it's spelled. First of all, thank you for being public servants. It's amazing that you guys do that. It's hard to live normally, but coming out and doing what you guys do is very commendable. We've seen up and down the peninsula, all the cities spending lots of money on fighting rent control, helping rent control, rent control, rent control, rent control. Daly City has an opportunity right now to learn from the past. Take that money and put it into affordable housing. Why do you need to study something that has been proven not to work? Workforce housing, affordable housing, low-income housing. You have the opportunity. Work with the planning department, change zoning, work and make, make housing affordable for people. Do affordable housing that people can buy. Subsidize down payments. Help...
Ms. Johnson?
Hi there.
It's Alyssa.
Alyssa Reese Johnson.
Okay.
Just like it spelled. Hi, first of all, thank you for being public servants, it's amazing that you guys do that. It's hard to live normally, but coming out and doing what you guys do is very commendable. We've seen up and down the peninsula, all the cities spending lots of money on fighting rent control, helping rent control, rent control, rent control, rent control. Daly City has an opportunity right now to learn from the past. Take that money and put it into affordable housing. Why do you need to study something that has been proven not to work? Workforce housing, affordable housing, low-income housing. You have the opportunity, work with the planning department, change zoning. Work and make, make housing affordable for people. Do affordable housing that people can buy. Subsidize down payments. Help people. By, by everyone fighting over this all the time, there's tons and tons of money being spent and it just gets, flushing it down the toilet. So hopefully Daly City can find their way out and look at all these other business models that have failed tremendously and create their own business model and be the zenith and do something and make it happen and help everybody. The greater good, isn't that what everyone wants? Fight for the greater good. Thank you.
We have, uh, Ara Telerian. Okay, and then, uh, Mr. Chowka, you'll be next up.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Good evening, uh, mayor, vice mayor and council members. My name is Ara Telerian. I'm a homeowner and rental property owner here in Daly City as well as a rental property owner in San Francisco and San Mateo. Here in Daly City, the tenants that I have here have lived in my building for an average of over ten years and in some cases, uh, close to twenty years. I have great relationships with them. Instituting rent control would cause irreparable harm to that relationship. To the extent that there is concern about rental housing in San Francisco, I think, um, as was mentioned earlier, development and, um, and, and building new and more housing is, is the way forward. I don't know how often if you look at rental platforms such as Craigslist or Zillow, but if, if you do, here in Daly City, you see a lot of single-family homes for rent. You see a lot of in-laws in, in, in homes. And you do see rentals in apartment communities that have amenities. What you do not see a lot of, and if you look at those platforms, are the apartments in the mom-and-pop kind of apartment buildings. And my fear is rent control would really hurt those owners in which they, they, most owners, property owners, rental property owners, have not contributed to the problem of the lack of housing. So with that being said, since there, I, and again, look at these platforms, it's not that many vacancies in the mom-and-pop apartments. And I, I find that to be that there's just simply a lack of supply. Development for new apartments and an increase in supply would greatly assist, uh, in that lack of housing. Programs that increase that will, would assist greatly. Furthermore, as, as you've probably, as was mentioned earlier, cities like San Mateo and Burlingame have had to endure out-of-town advocates. And I recall in San Mateo, a lot of advocates from, and tenant attorneys from East Palo Alto came to the city trying to bring rent control. And it's, it's my, uh, hope that, uh, rather than looking at out-of-town advocates, listen to the people here, uh, that are from Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have, uh, Mr. Chowka, how are you? Good evening, sir.
Very good, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the time tonight and, uh, members of the council. I'm the general manager of the Westlake Village Apartments, probably the largest apartment community. And I want to say that I'm so proud of the way that the group here has articulated many of these positions. And I can add to that, that rent control will only discourage property owners from maintaining their properties well. Uh, if there's a limit on the earnings that one can gain, the simple supply and demand and, and a pricing component, everyone knows the basic economics component of, uh, of the reality is if you control the pricing, the supply will be diminished because people will take their properties off the market, as many have articulated. And when you have a lower supply, uh, the price will go up. So the equal demand makes for a higher price point, which is what we're trying to avoid here, so. Basic economics, when, when combined with the eviction control where, um, uh, the, I think the, the, um, the, uh, the, uh, the components calls for a, um, uh, just cause eviction, I'd like to touch on that, that there already is just cause eviction while it's in the middle of one's lease. You can't ask someone to move out without cause while it's in the middle of their lease. So I would say that, you know, when we ask someone to move out of a property, it's because they've been adversely affecting the community and making noise and racket or disturbances, police problems, and they've already received six, seven, eight letters, warning letters to the effect of, if you don't behave yourself for the betterment of the community, we're going to have to ask you to leave when your lease is up. And anybody who doesn't take, uh, that seriously is asked to leave. And that's to the betterment of everyone that surrounds that apartment. So even though a just cause eviction, um, can yield, uh, a much better community, which is what we're all about here today, to make it better for all of our residents that remain who do conform and comply with the House rules. So thank you for everyone who addressed that so well tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chowka. All right, uh, next card we have is Pamela Di Giovanni and then we have, uh, Roderick Das Magbo. Uh, good evenings, Di Giovanni.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor and council members. Actually, um, because it was only a one-liner on the consent agenda, um, I don't think too many people that I knew that, because it was on the consent agenda, even though we should do our homework, knew that this item was going, going to be this intensive. So, um, I'd like to address the fact of, I think that while, you know, it's great to hear everybody and happy everybody's here from one side or, or another, or whatever side there is, it'd be, because you're elected officials for the Daly City, is like Betsy said, to have all the stakeholders come and more outreach, there's not enough time, no matter what side of the aisle, even if they're from, uh, anybody's, uh, like, doesn't matter whether they're real estate or whomever, because everybody has a voice and everybody should be heard because you're elected by all the people in Daly City. So, um, I would just like to say that if we just give it more time and do more due diligence and then, um, bring all the stakeholders together and not take a chance on losing a block grant money, which I, that, that part really stuck in my head, um, big time because I, I didn't realize that part and was glad to hear the staff report. And for me on a short notice, I usually find myself as a person that, that is pretty involved in my city and this, on a consent agenda, I thought that it would have given at least more of a public hearing type thing and more of a notice, it appears that other people got noticed and, uh, the rest of us, I don't know why we weren't noticed, but we weren't noticed. But anyway, but, um, I appreciate everybody being here and everybody has a voice and appreciate the council listening and, um, would like for them to take in consideration to have all stakeholders and more outreach in our city and not to lose our block grant money, which is in short supply of. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, Rod? Hey, Rod, how are you?
I'm here.
After, uh, Mr. Das Magbo, we have a Teresa Wong. Good evening.
So for every narrative, there's counter-narrative. We talk about economics. My pay is not going to go up anytime soon. I pay over five thousand dollars rent every month. My wife has two jobs, I got three jobs. My, my brother-in-law works, my, uh, my cousin is a substitute teacher. What about us? We talked about the youth. I am, as an educator, there is a foundational, uh, there's, there's a foundation of needs what people need to have in order to live. This is called the Maslow hierarchy of needs. One is food, drink, water, good air. But the second level in the hierarchy is safety. Homes, housing. I'm living check to check. And if we're talking about math, like mathematics and economics, I'm talking about well-being. I'm talking about how do we survive in Daly City? Yeah, we can talk about, uh, supply and demand, but what about the well-being of people? We need homes. We need teachers. If the teachers can't even live here, who's going to teach the kids? Who's going to teach our kids? Save the dream, the dream's an illusion now. This is a moral issue. Gentrification, that is a moral issue. To have homes, to have housing that's affordable. I shouldn't be, I have a doctorate, yo. A doctorate, I'm working three jobs, paying five thousand dollars a month? Good lord. Last year, same time last year, I was, me and my family were, were, we had, we were forced out. Anxiety. My two-year-old son, my, my four-year-old son, Simon was like, I miss the old house. What can we can stay there? Anxiety, it builds. Stress kills. We need homes that are affordable, we need rent control, we need to just live, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, Mr. Teresa Wong, and then we have a Kathy Mer- 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 Mareski? Who was that, that we? Uh, Ms. Wong, Ms. Wong?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Yeah, my name is Teresa Wong, I'm living in the Daly City fifty-one Chester Street. And, um, I'm not only a landlord, but I also a legal assistant of Karen Wuchiyama Law Office. I have seen lots, lots of the, um, cases regretting about the just cause. And most of them, it's lots of, uh, landlord property manager has been broken heart by their tenants. And as the peer speaker, uh, peer field speaker says, they usually have to receive about few letters in order to proceed to the procedure to file and lawsuit or giving officially thirty days' notice or sixty days' notice. But managing the property is not only as easy as correcting the rent. Landlord must have fixed all the damage of the tenant's permits. Even they don't even be able to fix their own place. Okay, a landlord, a tenant is not following the contract, will only pay part of the rent, can make their owner's life miserable. Because their attorney have to do a case will cost minimum for fifteen thousand dollars worth. Most of them, the case I have seen in my law firm will cost them about like twenty-five thousand dollars for each case. And this case is always have a very low ratio of winning. Because once we serve the letter, the tenants will correct their mistake. But once the landlord has go to location or go somewhere else, they put back their stroller, everything into the hallway. Yes, they should have their place to put their stroller. But however, it, once if there is any other tenant was get tripped down by the stroller or firehouse it, it's always go back to the owner's liberty. And even one in San Francisco, because all this kind of tenants issues and all this kind of lawsuit and most of the, um, large, um, insurance company has already declined their service. Sorry, time's up.
Yes, thank you so much. All right. Okay, Kathy? And after, Ms. Kathy, we have a Lee Han Lee. Good evening, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for letting me speak tonight. Um, I was born and raised in Daly City, so Daly City has my heart and I still have a small rental home here. I currently live in Pacifica and see that you're receiving information from Fair Rents for Pacifica. I want you to know that that group is a very small vocal group in Pacifica, they do not represent the interests of Pacifica. They have put rent control on the ballot in Pacifica for November. We are fighting very hard to defeat the measure because it will destroy our small community and I think it would be very bad for yours as well. Controlling rents through a measure like this does not help tenants. It doesn't put any more, uh, mark, it doesn't put any more units on the market, doesn't help tenants, doesn't provide any rental assistance. All it does is make it more difficult for tenants and landlords to negotiate and work together. So I urge you to remove those items from your agenda packet and bring it together with people in the community from all the different aspects of both owning and renting property to help make the, the relationships better. Because we have really good, uh, relationships with our tenants now and this type of a measure would, would be very bad. So thank you for letting me speak. Thank you.
Okay, Lee Han Lee, and then we have a Michael Kenary.
Very good.
Oh, okay.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Yeah, my English not that great, but just say the easy one. I'm the owner of Daly City in San Francisco, I both have a property in there. And my experience is in San Francisco, I bought a band-owned house and then it's very terrible situation, condition, and then after I upgraded, my tenant just ran to the other tenant, they be, she'd be a master tenant. And I called my lawyer, she said she'd get the right because I two bedroom, she can live more, uh, not more than four people, she can stay there. It's terrible to me, I pay every utility, everything and I cannot get him out. And I have to put a camera, whatever, everything. It's, they give me a very high pressure there, okay? And then I get the other house in, uh, San Francisco too. It's a single house, it's no rent control. After I raised the, I rented in, uh, year eleven, but in year sixteen, I just one time raised the rent. And then they gave me two-page list to call me. I, I get too many reason to sue you because I condition too bad. After that, I fixed that or negotiated with them and then they told me, I love San Francisco, I love your house, I like stay here. But it's totally cheating, they just robbing my house, okay? So I angry, I redraw my, the other three building unit in San Francisco, I just leave it empty for three years. So if you want Daly City like that, we don't want to fight with the tenant, okay? We are doing business, we need money. And then I stay in, in Daly City more than ten year. Some of tenant living more than thirty years. They just move out because they cannot work in this set, they need a, uh, every little building. We have stayed there more than ten year with the tenant. We have really good relationship, okay? If my condition no good, I cannot raise the high, raise to, uh, the rent too high. If I, they, if they cannot.
Sir, how are you?
I'm good, how about yourself?
Very good, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, landlord-ing is a business. Okay? I know what it costs to replace and put a unit back on market, depending on how long the tenant's been there. I live with people that have been there for eight to ten years in the building. It costs a lot of money. It also takes over a year to make up that money in lost rent for the month that it takes you to re-rent it out. It's supply and demand. Look at San Francisco, they've got a lot of units coming on the market. Those projects take five years to get it through city and county. They originally set them up as condos. They rent them out at first and now the market is being flooded for sale. So it's supply and demand. And we're, that's going to affect us and it is affecting us. That's the market. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, uh, next we have a Vilma Palad and then a Vanji Laurel Mesa. Ms. Palad? Is, is that? Ms. Palad, are, is that you, ma'am?
No, I'm Vanji.
Oh, you're Vanji. Ms. Palad? Okay. Not here. Uh, take your time, Ms. Mesa. After Ms. Mesa, we have a Wendy Wong. Wendy? Start. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, honorable members of the council. San Francisco is your poster child for voting no on any form of rent control. Rent control is a Band-Aid treatment for gangrene. That's if people would understand that better. It's not the solution for the housing crisis. Look at the example in San Mateo, the San Mateo officials and the citizens, the voters work together and they worked on increasing housing density, increasing height limits on the building. They are looking into secondary units. That is addressing, that's because rent control lost in the elections. So that is the way to address the housing crisis. Create more housing, not limit the incentives for investors. And, um, for tenants, you're paying five thousand for rent, it's because you live in a city that's desirable and well-kept. You know why that is? Because the rents and the taxes keep that city in good, in good order. Rent control is the fast track to slum and ghetto culture. So if that's what you want for the city, you know, then consider rent control. And, uh, for tenants, if you want to stop or put a lid on rent increases, take care of your units. Maintain them. Take care of them as if it's your own property. And that way, there won't be any need to increase rents to cover the expenses that a landlord should, should be paying for that. Thank you.
Okay, we have a Wendy Wong and then a Bob Gaverson. Wendy? Excuse me, Ms. Wong?
Hi, good evening.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Wendy Wong.
My name is Wendy Wong. I would like to share with you that San Francisco rent control situation, that is madness. I'm so impressed that everybody's here is telling what they want in front of you, and I am so, I'm so proud of them. First of all, I would like to tell you that people try to use compassion. The compassion and discrimination has been abused. When they talking about compassion, let me share you the story. Once the rent control apply, other protected tenant clause will be introduced. When we firstly introduce protected tenants, we try to protect tenants who have been living there for ten years, or they reached the age of sixty-five. So you may not, you cannot even evict them if they want to, the landlord want to move into their own property. Now, once this clause, this rules has been introduced, when I have friends who is sixty-five years old, they want to rent a place, guess what? The landlord said, may not say, okay, let me take your application. But guess what? Most of the senior people may not be able to get a place to rent because good intention, bad result. So please, Daly City residents should know that rent control has been introduced within a lot of cities, and it has been proven failure. We should make effort, we should talk about this, we should solve this housing crisis if this city is in such a high demand for rent, for renters. So I, I hope that, I would like to share with you that the rent control is a first step to be failure, and we should make a lot of effort and money to improve our housing and put new housing to our tenants who is able to live in the city.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Gavin Eason? Bob Gavrisen?
Garrison.
Garrison. Horizon, hey, okay. Good evening, sir.
So, uh, my name is Bob Garrison, Daly City made, native, uh, property manager, property owner. First of all, I would, uh, address the council, and I guess it's kind of obvious that the city of Daly City is against rent control. How did I figure that out? In, in the city council, these, these people are very smart people. They're not here because they don't understand the issues. They know about Pacifica rent control, they know about San Francisco rent control. They're very aware of what's happened in San Mateo and Burlingame. So I think we could stay here all night and tell them about how we're against rent control, but I think they're very adverse of what's going on. So, um, I would like to, to, first of all, some people weren't around in the early nineties when the city of Daly City started a program where they wanted to have mandatory building inspections on properties that are being sold. And we came up with, with a alternative, which was Project Home Safe. In nineteen ninety-two, the city of Daly City won awards for this program for adding new units to provide affordable housing to the city of Daly City. So as much as you people here, maybe you weren't here, I was here, the city of Daly City stepped up and made their progress to provide affordable housing. City of Daly City has added more infill projects in this town than probably any other city in the county. So they're pro-housing. Whether they're pro-rent control, they have to listen to both sides. In my forty years of real estate, I've met just as bad landlords as I've met tenants. So there's a fine line between this. And I want everybody to realize that we're not, they're not voting on it tonight, they have to look at it to obtain the money from the government. And I'm, and I'm, if I'm wrong on that, correct me. So if we were going to lose a million dollars by not voting on a few items, we need the million dollars. But they know you're going to be back when it comes up. And I think they've got the message tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Garrison. Uh, next, next card I have is a Mario Panaringan, and then a Frank Bella. Mr. Panaringan, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here to say just three things, just three. And number one, no rent control. Number two, no rent control. And number three, no rent control.
Thank you, Mr. Panaringan. Uh, Mr. Frank Bella. And after Mr. Bella, we have a Sam Xau. Good evening, Mr. Bella.
Good evening, city council. Thanks for having me here today. Um, I'm a property owner, I'm a landlord, I'm a tenant, and I've seen both sides. I'm a real estate broker, I've dealt with both tenants and property owners. There are good and bad on both sides. And the rent in the Bay Area is a problem, but this isn't the solution. And we know it's not the solution by looking at a lot of other cities who've had it, as many people already stated. I hear a million-dollar loss that we might take. There's probably more than a million dollars being paid in rent, or on seat, on taxes by property owners here tonight in this room. I don't know how that all works out, but this is a costly venture. We're dealing with it in Pacifica, in other cities in the county, and it's caused by a lot of things, but this is not the solution. Property owners have children they need to rent to, they have friends, they have families, and it's an issue for everyone. I wish the title here was Fair Housing for Tenants and Property Owners. Seems to be lopsided. Again, rent control's not the answer. Please eliminate these things from moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Sam, Mr. Sam Xau? Good evening, sir.
Good evening, council members. Uh, I'm the landlord in Daly City, and I'm against the rental control. Because rental control cannot help solve the housing issues in the Bay Area. If you look at the two factors for rental control, there's just supply and a demand. So to reduce the rent, you have to either you reduce the demand or increase the supply. Can rental control do either of this? No, it cannot. It can only discourage the supply and then increase the rent. So if you look at San Francisco and Oakland, it's a very good example. Do you think rent, rent control helped San Francisco to decrease the rent? No. It actually it helped, it discouraged landlord to clear this market and, and increase the demand, actually. Thank you.
All right, um, I only have three cards left, and these are the names I called earlier. I'm going to call them one more time, and then, uh, Chin Hong Liu? Chin Hong Liu? Okay, uh, Xan Pe Chen? Xan Pe Chen? Xan Pe Chen? Okay?
Uh, good evening.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Liu?
Yes.
Hi, good evening.
Uh, I just want to say no rent control in Daly City. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir? Sir? What's your name?
Uh, Hui Cheng Liang. Hui Cheng Liang.
Oh, Xan Pe Chen?
Hui Cheng Liang.
Oh, who's that?
Hui Cheng Liang.
Okay, got you here. Okay, thank you. Good evening.
Hi, uh, please, no rent control. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, the last speaker I have is a Rovi Lynn Antonio, and I have two cards. Ms. Antonio, I guess you're going to speak on behalf of someone else if you go over your two minutes, okay? All right, good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, mayor, city council, and city staff. My name is Rovi Lynn Antonio. I'm the VP of Public Affairs for California Apartment Association, and we are a rental housing, um, trade association representing rental property owners in San Mateo, Santa Clara, and Santa Cruz counties. We do have a large membership who operate and own here in the city. We are here to express concerns with the inclusion of rent control, just cause eviction, mandatory Section Eight, and creation of a rent registry listed in the fair housing goals. They don't belong in the report. Fair housing is about discrimination of the Federal Housing Act. This is, what you're talking about is affordable housing. Other jurisdictions who see, received the same exact letters to add these to your report have actually rejected them, and we are asking you to do the same. We understand that the city wants to address this housing needs, and we should, but this is not the right approach. Policies like rent control has been proven to be a failure in every city where it's been adopted. It does not build one single unit of housing, nor guarantees that the rent-controlled unit actually goes to a household with low income, a teacher, or a senior. It is a divisive issue that takes focus away from important policies for Daly City, such as creating new jobs, attracting new businesses, and building attainable housing for all income levels. The mere discussion of rent control already sends the signal to Daly City property owners that they are at risk. This is why they're here today. There is nothing collaborative or fair about this. We are here because these policies are being used as a potential metric for the goals that's related to anti-displacement within the fair housing goals. Worst about these proposals is that it's expensive. We've seen firsthand what rent control discussions do to cities around the Bay Area. Once this issue's brought up, the bill keeps going. For example, the city of Santa Rosa spent around eight hundred thousand dollars and spent one year of staff time studying the issue. In San Mateo and Burlingame, over a million was spent just to hold the election on rent control initiatives.
I, I would like to give her my two minutes. My name is Christina Dare.
Christina Dare, I do have your card. Thank you so much, Ms. Antonio, please continue. Thank you.
And in Mountain View, in just less than a year of adoption, the city already spent one million just to implement the program. Where did the money come from? It came from the city's general funds. That's taxpayers' money. These are general funds normally spent on public safety, library service, sewer infrastructure, and street maintenance. Money that could have been better, well-spent, improving the quality of life for residents and providing essential city services. Instead, they were spent on a topic that at the end of the day does not address our housing challenges, and this is not the most prudent use of city's limited funds. Regarding the other goals in the fair housing plan, the industry is in agreement with the list that achieves to expand housing opportunities and choices for Daly City residents. We support expanding homeownership opportunities as well as increasing availability of rental units to lower-income households. For example, the city's goal number two commits two million in city's affordable housing fund to develop fifty rental units for low-income households. I ask that the city explore using the county's Measure K funds as a potential funding mechanism to also support the city's affordable housing needs. Measure K was passed with a widespread community support, especially for affordable housing. The city should explore working with the county to help make these funds available for Daly City residents. And on the issue with Section Eight, I want to reemphasize that CEA's commitment with the county in assisting, improving Section Eight utilization. Last year, CEA partnered with a housing authority to conduct outreach and marketing to recruit new members into the program. We were successful, and we enrolled about a hundred new landlords accepting Section Eight. We want to continue this partnership with the city and also encourage Daly City property owners to enroll in the program. Incentives work, mandates don't. Please, I share this with you to demonstrate that there are realistic goals already in the fair housing plan. CDBG funding are not at risk, or they're not contingent if you don't take up rent control tonight. There's a reason why other jurisdictions said no. I believe that the goals that you have has the potential to show results and truly contribute to the housing needs. We can do this without clouding these goals with the addition of rent control, eviction controls, and other unnecessary mandates that puts the burden on housing providers in the city. Thank you.
Okay, um, that's all the cards I have at this time on the subject. I'm going to basically, at this time, solicit any comments from my colleagues here before...
I'd like to start.
I make a comment. Yes, Mr. Winter Ventura?
Um, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me first say that I have been very impressed by the collective voice that the, obviously the majority of people here have, you know, come up and spoken on this issue. I have also been, however, impressed by the sole dissenter who has had the courage also to come up and talk about this issue. Where I am on the issue of rent control and the other issues before us is not going to be decided today. Where I am struggling with is about process. And what I mean by that is, um, we are being asked to make a recommendation to include certain comments in this letter that will go out to the federal government. So that, because it's a requirement for us to obtain funding for housing. What I'm struggling with is, it seems to me we're putting the cart before the horse with respect to talking about this issue. On the one hand, we are being asked to recommend the inclusion of things like rent control. But on the other hand, there seems to be a consensus that we have not been given enough time for a full, I think the words that were used was, not enough time for a full and comprehensive council consideration. And that's where I think we are lacking in order to make that determination. The question I think we all have to ask ourselves is, have we, as a body, had a full-blown opportunity to say in good conscience that we have fully considered the response? Now, it sounds to me like the other jurisdictions that have passed this recommendation have been given a thorough and complete process to make that recommendation. And I'm not sure we have had that benefit. So I guess my first question is, goes to staff. You were saying that, um, I, I, maybe I'll ask it this way. If we decide that we do not want to include the recommendations that are issued, is the fact that we haven't been given a full and fair opportunity to comprehensively look at this issue, will that carry the day in terms of making the argument as to why we have rejected inclusion in the letter? So I understand we have, I think you were saying that it puts us in some kind of jeopardy if we don't include it. So my question is, would the reason why we didn't include it is because we haven't had the full and fair opportunity to comprehensively look at this issue be a sufficient enough reason that we don't put ourselves in jeopardy of losing that money?
Um, if I understand the question correctly, our, the consultant recommended to us that comments should not be declined unless the city has gone through a thorough process to review and study the issue being presented.
Okay, so I guess my question then is, is this enough of a full and fair process? Which I don't think it is. I mean, I think a full and fair process is the some six months that San Mateo, for example, had gone through, right? We haven't had those kind of discussions.
No, we have not had noticed meetings and workshops
Yeah.
where the full range of opinions are invited to, to speak.
Okay. So, let me also ask you this. By declining to include it in the letter, that doesn't prevent us from taking the issue if the issue is meant to be taken up by the council? If they want to, uh, talk about that issue, they can fully develop it at their leisure, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So it doesn't prohibit the discussion So it doesn't prohibit the discussion from happening? And, okay, I think I have my answer. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Buenaventura. Any other comments from council? All right, I have, I'd like to read something, my thoughts. The assessment of fair housing issues in San Mateo County region is not filled with bad news. In fact, the report finds our region is high-opportunity area and that we don't experience a high rate of discrimination compared to other metro regions. Now, as I look at the report for Daly City, I think Daly City has done its fair share in trying to provide affordable housing for ours constituents and our residents, to include mid-pen housing that we just went through, to include that all new development in Daly City must provide 20% below-market rate for the folks here. But I am concerned about the inclusion of any recommendations to study rent stabilization, rent control, just cause eviction, Section 8 nondiscrimination policy, source of income, and creating a rental registry because these do not belong in a fair housing report. Housing and urban development has no control over these types of policies, nor utilize federal funding, except for the county's Section 8 program. Daly City needs to be careful in making an appearance as if Daly City HUD funds are contingent on these policies. They are not. We have to be realistic in our goals and ensure that we can secure deliverables for our residents. You know, I read an email today, and it couldn't have been said even better. Before I get to that, I want to make mention that CDB Notice of Available Funding for 2017 was released, and applications are due Friday by December 1st. Putting these complex issues in the report that we will have to look at will only delay it. And I don't want to take the chance of getting those CDB grant funds that we have gotten every year based upon what Daly City has done. And they have done a lot. That's why we keep getting the money. From what I read here, there's approximately $35 million in federal community development block grant funding, of which $27 million is allocated for the funding year 2017 to the state from the federal government of housing and urban development. Right now, on the governor's desk, he has until, as of September 15th, there are bills to which will provide an influx of $4 billion in bond funding, which would generate an additional $200 million, $300 million a year in ongoing revenues to support a range of investment to include planning for affordable housing, construction, preservation, and homeownership programs, and matching funds to support local or regional housing trust funds. Getting back to the email that I made mention earlier that someone sent to me, they said we should be looking at creating new housing, but not penalizing those who are providing housing at this particular time. The inclusion of these complex issues are not only time-consuming, and Daly City has limited resources to be redirected from their existing priorities and the other goals listed on the report. The city is doing something about the need for affordable housing, and Daly City is fully committed to finding programs to address this need. You know, I heard earlier about, and I knew about this, about the San Francisco and how they have 36,000 units on the market that's available.
30,000.
Well, actually, and somebody else said 40,000, but thank you for that. That should be saying something. It should be saying something. And, you know, and I'm trying to put myself as a home, well, I am a homeowner, but if I was renting a piece of property, I wouldn't, I would not want the headaches as well. I agree with the current goals for the city to provide $2 million in our city's Affordable Housing Fund to develop units for lower-income households and develop rental acquisition programs, explore down payment assistance programs. And I heard a comment earlier this evening, and I'm quite familiar, we have expended CDBG grant funds to pay for the legal representation of those who have been evicted based upon ADA evictions, race, ethnicity. We are doing some of those things now. Could we do it better? Yes, I'm sure we can. Are there some bad landlords out there? Yes, there is. Are there some bad tenants out there? Yes, there is. That is why we all have to come together and come up with some sort of solution that can, everybody's not going to be happy. But the thing is, if you create a mandate, you're going to make it tougher, you're going to increase the demand, and supply is going to go down.
Yeah.
For the purpose, for the purpose of this report, I want to exert all of our energy and focus on the findings and realistic actions, goals, that HUD can assist the county to improve housing choices and accessibility. This is a regional issue, not Daly City. To my understanding, the letter have been sent to five other cities in San Mateo to include the county of San Mateo, the cities of Redwood City, San Mateo, and South San Francisco. Okay, so what was the result? The county of San Mateo rejected all of them. But, well, no, 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 no. I mean, but why did they reject it? Because they have a plan in place. They have committed, they have created a subcommittee called the Affordable Housing Review Committee, to which they will, from this point on, study the concerns of rent control, rent stabilization, just cause eviction. But just putting it in the report is not contingent, and it should not be contingent, upon us getting the funding that we so much need. So I ask, do you want to, basically, if you don't get your way and it's not in the report, are you going to move forward and say, "Well, you know what? I'm going to be the bad person, and I'm going to dispute it, and you're going to cause Daly City not to get funding"? I'm not saying it is an issue. It is an issue. But this is not the time to try to enforce that or put it into the report. Lastly, okay, continuing to what I said, San Mateo rejected all of it, San Mateo City rejected all of it, they favored to address Section 8 utilization through incentives, not mandates. South San Francisco rejected all of it, and Redwood City Council hasn't reviewed the goals. So my feeling is, I'd rather have a piece of the pie than no pie at all. I would recommend that we take off those five considerations in the report and submit the report. Items, rent control, rent stabilization, just cause eviction, creating a registry, and Section 8 discrimination. That is my recommendation to my council members. And let's move ahead, and let's get these new housing projects going and address these issues, but in a timely fashion. Thank you.
If I might, and the staff as well, address some of the concerns that you've just raised. Let me first of all say that it has never been our intent to say that the city of Daly City would support any of these five actions. But because of the threat of potential litigation, if we didn't include the comments...
Good point.
...that was a reason for us, when we met with the council committee, we explained to the council committee what the concerns were. Now, again, that doesn't mean we're endorsing any of these. It does mean that we don't have a definitive answer on every single one of those items. And to the extent that there are those in the community that perhaps may have a different viewpoint than the majority of people here, and I'm not saying anyone's viewpoint is incorrect tonight. I'm just saying that there may be other viewpoints that we have not had the benefit of hearing and gaining input so that when you might make a decision on one of these issues in the future, that you would have a balanced perspective about this group and their perspective and others who share a different perspective. So it's not that we're trying to say, or force, or even suggest the council should move in this direction. We're not. But what we are saying is we lack information on which decision-making would occur at any time in the future if the council chose to do that. Let me also say that the council recently has been taking up the issue of rooming houses and a lot of other things that also, that also potentially is impacted by some of these various issues. So for us to gain more information, for the council to make decisions about any particular issue, including the overarching issue about rooming houses that you've been hearing a lot about from your residents here in Daly City, studying the issues does not mean that we are going to support or recommend them. It just means we would gather more information to have a better assessment of what any of those actions potentially would have on this community and our ability to provide expanded affordable housing opportunities.
So in the alternative, then, what you're saying is, is that if we don't study them and we omit them, then if we were to look at this issue in the future, we'd have no data?
Well, that's correct. We wouldn't.
Okay, so we would be...
And studying them does not infer in any way a commitment to any one of them. And that's what, I'm not sure we've made that clear, that it does not infer that we would commit to any single one of these issues. It just means that we would study the issue more in depth and gain, as Councilmember Buenaventura said, a sense of, maybe there are other people like the lone voice who had a different perspective. But we don't know because we have not had the benefit of broader input.
But only if there was interest on our part?
If there was interest. But I assume that at any time in the future, in the near term or in the very long term, if the council wanted to consider any of these, and, as I just mentioned, want to consider the issues around what we are seeing, the impact of rooming houses developing in the city, we still need more data. That's one of the reasons why we're going to have a task force to look at broader issues. So I only raise that issue for you, and the staff can comment more directly on the impact with respect to CDBG funds. But I raise this issue just because I think there is a very real need to gather information about these issues. And recognizing it and saying, "We're not making a decision, we're not supporting it, but we need to know more about it," does not mean that we are going to move in any direction, but it does preclude the potential for some of these groups to litigate against us because we didn't have sufficient data in making a decision or a recommendation to you. So that's the place where we find ourselves tonight, and why we have approached it this way. And not that we're for rent control or any of these issues which, obviously, many of the members of the public who are here tonight find to be very odious, the thought that you would even consider them. But considering them is different, or gathering data is different than saying, "We're recommending a policy that supports these," because we're not doing that.
And in the absence, wait a minute.
All right, hold on, no, no, folks, I'm sorry, we passed that at this particular time. It's just more information gathering at this time.
I do think it's very important, though, that you hear from the staff regarding CDBG and...
Okay, but before I hear from staff, the question is, these other cities who rejected all of these, could these special interest groups or the advocates file legal or litigation against them?
The issue with the other jurisdictions that have rejected these comments, they can do so with a certain amount of confidence because the item was analyzed in a public forum and went through a series of public workshops in which the council ultimately acted upon. We have not had that process, and so we can't rely on that to...
She went through ballot, too, right?
In San Mateo.
Right. Right. And ultimately, all those jurisdictions did not wind up supporting rent control. So as you can see, the process led to that decision. However, they can rely on having had that process.
They had data.
Correct.
They had information.
Correct. And a robust public participation program.
Like the beginning, like, which would be the inception of that, would be the beginning of it, of that process, could be today.
Correct.
Okay. Vice Mayor, did you have anything?
Yeah, the last comment is, I do want to address everyone and say, I appreciate that each and every one of you have come here and voiced your opinion. I think that's the importance of hearing from each and every one of you around your concerns. You know, I think it's around ensuring that everyone's voice is at the table, and more so, you've shared your opinion today, which is very helpful. So I think we, I was on the committee, and when we talked to staff, they said that there hasn't been a process, and other jurisdictions did have a process, and we wanted to ensure that when we responded that there was adequate data. But I do appreciate each and every one of you that have come here today. I think, you know, there, as around process and gathering more information, it is important. And in any issue, I think gathering that information from, you know, the respective community here, other, you know, stakeholders not present, in order for us to ensure that we have the data in the future as well.
So in your opinion, then, since you served on the committee, do you think that you could, would you recommend that we would omit or put them in?
I think it's just in process, process-wise, as the staff recommended around, ensuring we have the data. And it's not, as mentioned, this is not stating, you know, there is a recommendation for rent control or against it. We need to have, as policymakers, all of the information needed.
I'd like to then defer, I'd defer to your judgment. You served on this committee, and the fact that you served on it and the fact that you actually have articulated this idea that data is not something we should be afraid of. It's data is something that the other jurisdictions had when they made a decision. So I agree with you that they should not be omitted.
I mean, I think where my struggle is, I still think it's, we're doing this the other way around. I think we can get the data and do the study without having to sign off on a letter that basically sort of, I know it doesn't technically obligate us, but it sort of sets in motion things happening. And I think we, as a council, can always, if we decide to, take up the issue on our own. And I go back to saying that, how can you recommend something to be put in a letter if we haven't, as a body, had the time to comprehensively look at it, like the other jurisdictions have done so? And so...
Again, the...
I'm not saying that... I'm not saying that we're going to do it. I'm just saying, you're asking us to make a recommendation or to include this into a letter. And if you're asking us to do that, other jurisdictions that have been asked to do the same thing have had the benefit of going through a six-month exercise to do it. We don't have the benefit, we didn't do that, but yet we're still going to make the recommendation. And I, that's where I think I disagree.
I'm just misunderstanding. I thought that, I thought that if we were to include those in the study, that then we would then be able to start that process.
Correct. That is correct. It is only to say that we would...
But you could start that process without including it in the letter.
But, but, but I think that there's, but I agree with you, Ray, but I heard something about a threat of litigation. So I don't, I don't know about, I don't, I'm not adept at this issue, but I heard that if you don't admit it, there's two things, there are two adverse things that could happen. One, you could lose the funding, and two, you get sued.
Right.
So for me to make a decision, I need to know what that assessment is. I mean, if it is a real assessment, then it is something that you have to put into your decision. You have to consider it as an important factor to consider. So I would like someone to articulate to me what that, what the likelihood is of getting sued or losing funding.
Okay. To be clear, HUD is not requiring that we have rent control. HUD is not requiring we have regulations regarding just cause eviction. They were requiring that we had a process to take in public comment regarding fair housing in our jurisdiction. One of those, many of the comments...
All right, folks, hold on. Folks, please, you've had your chance to talk. We're getting more information, so we're going to make a, somehow try to make a decision this evening. Please have some courtesy. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Ms. Mothersen.
We received comments making a series of recommendations of what Daly City and all the other jurisdictions should consider. We have heard that comment. Unfortunately, we have not had time to do a full analysis of that, to present to the council. The best we can do to address that comment is to say that we will look into it. And that's the best we can do. And failure to do so is basically ignoring a comment that we have received from a stakeholder in this issue.
And in the previous iteration, I believe that the other jurisdictions were allowed to ignore that comment because they went through a process, correct?
They relied on a process that they had already had. There is one other jurisdiction, in the city of South San Francisco, that is in a similar situation as we are. However, we are, to date, not aware of what step they will be taking. However, we feel that it was prudent to at least identify the comment and acknowledge that we received that comment, and because we haven't been able to analyze it and present appropriate data, that we should continue to look into it.
I get it. I understand.
All right. Any other questions of staff?
Let's vote on it. Let's call for the question.
Thank you, Mr. Gengona. So on consent, item number 10, call for the question, approving the assessment of fair housing report. When is this report due? By December 1st? Did I have that right?
October 6th. It will be submitted to HUD. The county's submitting it October 6th.
Okay. On the, I'll entertain a motion of any sort for approving the assessment of the fair housing report to be submitted October 6th.
Move the staff recommendation.
So as per Mr. Gengona, he's recommending that he would like to entertain based upon staff's recommendation. And can I have that, please?
What's staff's recommendation?
Pursuant to the direction from the Affordable Housing Committee, it is to indicate in the Assessment of Fair Housing in Daly City section that they will consider, we will consider the five policy initiatives that were requested through public comment.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Hearing none.
Second.
Okay, we have a second by the Vice Mayor. So we have a first and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
No.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
No.
So we might need somebody on this one.
Okay.
So... I got a question for them.
Mr. Gengona, please.
Okay, so it looks like, it looks like we're at an impasse. There's no action. My question to the staff would be, I mean, we, clearly we wouldn't have had a tie vote if Judith was here. Is there a chance that this thing could get continued until we have a full complement here? Or is that...
She's not going to be back.
All right, all right, well then, so then if we, it fails then?
There's no action on the resume.
There is no action.
Well, failure to submit a report would certainly mean we would not be getting funding, so we would need some sort of recommendation to move something to HUD, correct, Etsy?
Okay.
Just for clarification, so the HUD report, as it's been stated administratively, is a precursor to funding. The threat of litigation is HUD essentially saying you're not going to get anything, okay? So what the policies that have been presented here are, we have to have action for the policies for the city to consider and evaluate these public comments. So to not include it means you're not addressing these comments. So essentially, what is required is my reading, and the staff probably has a little more, can elaborate further, is that the city will consider and evaluate these policies because these comments have to have a comment. To not have any comment or a basis as to why you would not include it or deny it means that you haven't had a sufficient public process. So this, yes, there is a risk that we will not get the funding if it isn't, it's administrative as that. The other agencies that had these comments did have an elaborate process, and then they were able to comment it and say that they would deny this process, but they have a substantial basis as to why they would deny it. And we don't have those findings to say why we would not deny it. So to not include it would mean that there would be essentially no report if you don't include the comments at all.
Madam City Attorney, there would be no report?
Right.
I mean, we're asking to take it out, but submit the report.
Exactly, meaning you don't have any comments to support the public comments. You have to have a basis as to why. You either accept or deny it. And if you deny those comments, what is your substantial basis as to why you haven't? There hasn't been a sufficient public process. So what is staff recommending, essentially because of the time constraint, is that we consider, to consider these, the rent stabil, the policies that are implemented, so that you would have a process. And ultimately, the decision is the council. This is just policy directions per HUD because these comments have been stated by the stakeholders. So those comments were rejected, but they were addressed because they had a public process.
Just so that I may read the way it's written in the report, if you go through the draft recommendations, particularly when we talk about rent stabilization, the city identifies its affordable housing ordinance, the last statement is our response to the comments. And the statement is, is the city will identify and complete a process to evaluate the merits and effectiveness of a rent stabilization policy. So again, the statement is to identify a process to consider the merits. So again, it's just simply creating a process. It is not a recommendation.
And just so, this is just to clarify things. I know that in the staff report, it sort of states that you adopt a rent stabilization and just cost tenant policies. It can be worded differently in terms of the city considering, looking into these issues. Because I know it's stated in a sense that it looks like you're adopting these policies, but you're not adopting these policies, you're considering a process.
What is being, what staff is requesting the council to adopt is the attachment, which is addressing the public comments. So if you don't look at the report and you look at the recommended topic, same with just cause, the last statement, "The city will identify and complete a process to evaluate the merits and effectiveness of a just cause policy." Again, it is not suggesting that we recommend such a policy, but that we create a process to evaluate it.
Even though that was not a requirement under HUD, basically, we're just trying to protect ourselves, saying that at least we addressing the correspondence that came in.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. That is correct. And one might also argue, if we were to move forward with the process as we've outlined it and recommended for you tonight, I would argue that the process began tonight. So we've already began to gather data on the issue of rent control and some of the other items that, and we have a videotape of this. So we now have step one in the process that we would undertake to move forward, to bring back the data sufficient for the council, to then reject all of these items, if that's what the council chooses to do, but with some data to back a rational, to provide a rational basis for rejecting them.
All right. I'm, I...
How are you going to spend a million dollars on that?
I need to understand if we can change the wording to say, to consider.
We certainly can wordsmith it that way, to say, to consider, to gather data, to be able to consider the potential for any of those things. So we can definitely wordsmith it to make it very clear that looking at these issues is purely for information gathering and to provide a rational basis for the council to consider at a future date a policy position on any and all of these items.
All right, with that, with the updated information that we have, we'll go through this again. Is there a new motion on the floor to change the wording to say, to consider the items indicated in the report? The report will be submitted with the items, but we will only be considering. No decision will be made until we have taken the steps to get all the stakeholders in and to...
A million dollars.
How much is that going to cost, Ms. Martel?
It will not come anywhere near costing us a million dollars. I think in the, for those cities like San Mateo where they came up with that figure, it included the cost for an election and a lot of other things that they put the rent control issue before the public, or will put it before the public.
The other thing is, we can rely on borrowing data, I believe, from the other jurisdictions.
Sure, from other jurisdictions as well.
Right.
The Board of Supervisors approved a lengthy white paper on this topic that has a lot of background information that this council could consider.
Thank you for that. If I'm not mistaken, the Board of Supervisors also provided money for Measure K funds, also towards affordable housing, and they have committed to $30 million with the years to come. All right, we have to move on. We have to bring this back up again, folks, to make a decision tonight. The report has to be submitted. So with the wordsmithing to say, "We will consider," but it's no guarantee that we will approve, it's the mere fact that we will consider the report to be submitted. So is anybody willing to make that motion?
No, not me. I made my motion already.
Okay, I mean, we are...
You've got to do it, come on.
I did it once already.
We are, we are caught at an impasse, folks, and we... Vice Mayor.
Okay, I make a motion and including ensuring that we put a consider, the word consideration within the report, ensuring that that's in there and to the public that's present, that in any way, it does not mean, when we, when mentioned earlier, it doesn't mean that we're in one way or another, you know, for or against. This is, and your input is valuable to us. As mentioned earlier, it's now part of our data. We, we're at an impasse, we need to move forward, we need to get business done, and so that's my motion. Do I have a second?
With that significant change in language, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Gengona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
No.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
No. Yeah.
Okay. I mean...
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the vote that has been taken, and we understand each council member's position, but now we are incapable of responding to the federal government and providing a response. So I would like some direction from council as to what we should be responding to the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. I appreciate that. You know, it's kind of tough because you're kind of saying, you're either, what is it, bite the nose and spite the face or something like that? I really want to put it out there that this is very tough, and we will most likely not obtain funding. Now, this is just a comment. And folks, you know, we support you, but we haven't heard both sides. And this is not a decision saying we will accept these particular items that are on the report. It's only that we will consider. And to say, you know, not to have anything, and you're probably saying, "It's not my fault, you guys and gals voted," but, you know, it's making it very difficult for us because we're trying to hear both sides, but it makes it difficult for us because we've got basically a representative from a large contingent who feels one way. You know, we can hear stories and concerns about others as well, but if this wasn't important, it would not have been brought up in the first place. So...
Can we, so of the, I don't know, how many is this, 15? Is it 16?
It was items 10 through 15 from the report.
10 through 15. Can we remove items, can we approve everything but remove items 10 through 15?
If I may? The council could make that motion. We could delete the comments and submit it. There's no guarantee of litigation or denial of funding, but there certainly would be if we do not submit a report.
Right, so, okay. So maybe that's the more prudent way to go.
Can you repeat that again, please?
We can attempt to remove the comments that are causing the controversy here. We could remove those and submit the report. It's rolling the dice, but we can do it and see if it works. But by not presenting a report at all, we absolutely will lose funding. So something needs to get submitted.
Right. So, okay. So maybe that is what we should do. I mean, I'd be willing to make the motion if someone would second it, because we need to have a report.
And clarification? Or...
Can I ask one last question prior to continuing? What is the, what is the chances of, does anyone know the chances of litigation?
So essentially, it's not so much the chances of litigation. Litigation is sort of, you're not going to get the money because you don't have sufficient findings. That's, that's the, that's the risk, is that you don't have sufficient findings to deny the report, so you may not get the funding.
And the expert...
And litigation would essentially be sort of like in the form of injunction necessarily.
Okay. The expertise of our staff in the past, can you, has that happened in previous years where there wasn't a response without?
This is the first year that the city's been required to submit an assessment of fair housing. It's been a different document in other years. So by excluding these five comments, we are essentially declining to accept five comments that were made on the part of the public. So we can, we would be declining to accept those comments.
But with us not moving forward, we would have not a report moving forward, right?
If we do not submit an assessment of fair housing, we will not receive federal funding.
Okay, so I second it.
Can we also move on and consider these items later on, such as rent control, rent stabilization, without putting it in the document?
You definitely can consider these policies or any other policies at any time that you wish to consider. However, considering them later and not referencing them in the assessment of fair housing does not address the problem that you're declining five comments made by the public, potentially without sufficient grounds.
Right.
We have to, we either have to decline them, the comments, or accept the comments.
Can we say that we're declining because we don't have sufficient information for such a complex issue? We haven't had the opportunity to-
That was, I believe, the intent of the committee was that we accept the comments with the intent of studying them and, and no commitment that we would land on either side of the issue, only that we would accept. If you decline the comments, then you're not considering them.
We're not considering them for the report, but if we have to provide an explanation as to why we didn't or why we feel it should not have been in the report, could it be because we didn't have enough time to consider them because the letter came in, what, last month?
Keen, the, the, these letters began to come in August 24th, and the city was notified, the city was notified about two weeks ago.
All right, that's my, that's my comment and question. So we have a first and a second to decline, to remove items 10 through 15.
Just for clarification, is it to remove or to reject? Because I'm hearing from staff that you have to actually acknowledge the comments and reject it. We can't assume that the comments did not exist, right?
Decline, you are declining to accept these comments.
Decline to accept, not just remove the comments.
And decline to accept is what-
Right. You cannot just remove it from the report. You have to either accept them or reject them. But if we reject them, the risk that we have been talking about is that we don't have a rational basis for rejecting them because we have not gathered sufficient data on which the council could make your decision to reject them. So what we are doing is suggesting that you leave the door open to gather data, and at a future date, you can then either accept or reject one or all of these policies.
I kind of disagree, Ms. Martel, because our rational basis is that we didn't have the data to make that decision to even add it to the report.
Well, I, Mr. Mayor, I think that that does not provide a rational basis for rejecting them. Not having sufficient data means that we should then go get the data so that you then can make a decision if you choose to do so. But rejecting it in the absence of any data and saying, "We're not going to agree to go get data so that we can look at these issues," that's where the absence of a rational basis exists.
All right. Mr. Buena Ventura?
So, all right, so if, if there is data available that the county, on the county level that has spoken to this issue, can that data be the form, the formation of the rational basis? And that data be accepted before the issuance of the October 7th letter to provide a rational basis?
Good point.
The county has evaluated this issue and drafted a white paper that the board of supervisors approved, adopting a variety of affordable housing measures. The issue of rent control was discussed, but not included within that white paper as a direction that they were going to take. I'll, I would leave it to the city attorney to say whether or not Daly City can decline to accept these policy recommendations because of a white paper that the county wrote. I don't-
But to be fair, that white paper has not been presented to the council, so for the council to rely on a document that hasn't been reviewed doesn't seem appropriate.
I get that, and I'm, what I guess what I'm suggesting is-
Well, I do have a copy of it.
It's not agendized for consideration.
Can it be agendized before the October date?
With this council?
Yeah.
I don't believe there's another council meeting.
No, no. Well, there isn't scheduled one, but can we agendize one and schedule one just for this issue? Why couldn't we do that?
I'm not saying you can't. I'm just scheduling why.
I think, like, there's nothing that prevents us from doing that. And, I mean, if we want to make a case that, that satisfies the rational basis and the data is out there, and it's just a matter of reconvening, I think we can do that. I mean, if, if our goal is, is we want to move forward, go beyond this issue and, you know, not, not, we're clearly, I think we're all agreeing that we're not deciding the issue, but we just need to overcome this letter, this hurdle, and let's find, figure out a way to do it.
So we can certainly work to see, since we have not analyzed the county's response, I guess one of the questions I would have for the city attorney is whether we could rely on a countywide, a county document to say that that's applicable to Daly City. Because basically, this is supposed to address issues specific to Daly City. So my, my question to the city attorney would be, can we rely on a county document to then say that's our rational basis?
Okay. Unfortunately, it can't be that conclusive, but it is specific to Daly City. So while you can use the data of the county, whether or not it meets the threshold of the federal government that Daly City has taken the initiative to assess and address the tenant hardship specific to Daly City might not, I, I don't have the complete answer to that because it's not conclusive, but my understanding is that they wanted to see a process, and they wanted us to explain that process. And if our conclusion was to reject these findings, it was based on the data and the information received through that process. So having one meeting before we submit a letter based on another study done by the county may not be specific to the demographics of Daly City, and I don't know, you know, what the answer to that would be, but my guess would be that it may not be sufficient findings, because they do look at it as an assessment. And so when this was brought before the council, these are comments that are before you, and it's for the council to consider. Whether it is to, to accept the comments and consider it at a later time, that's what HUD would like to see.
Can, can we involve ourselves in a process that presents both sides? Because the way I understand, the process that we had was by a committee that heard from the pro-rent-control folks, but not the opposition to that issue. So what I'm saying is, can we involve ourselves in a process to get that other opinion? And again, I'm just trying to be fair, but at the same, once that's done, reconvene and then say, "We have the data from a fair and impartial meeting of both sides," and then get it done.
I just don't know, and this is a question for staff and also for the council, how much time you have to engage in that process. I mean, I'm not saying you can't do it. I'm just, don't know.
I, I just don't think we can accomplish that in a week. I just don't think we can do that.
Okay. So then the next question is, is there an application that can be effectuated to extend the deadline of October 7th? Is that the date?
Yeah, that's the date. The county intends to submit the comprehensive document. I do, I have not had much luck getting HUD to extend deadlines over the years. I believe that's a statutory deadline. I can definitely make a call and find out about that. I'm not optimistic that we can extend that deadline.
So, let me ask, the process where the initial committee recommendation was done, can you tell me how many, like, was that a couple of meetings that that occurred? Was it a month? What was the timeline?
There was an initial set of policy objectives for Daly City drafted that did not include these five policy initiatives. We met with the committee on September 11th in response to a set of letters that asked for these particular policy initiatives.
So it was just one meeting?
Yes, we had one meeting with the Affordable Housing Committee.
Why can't we do one meeting? If one meeting satisfies the rational basis, why can't we do one other meeting?
No, there is no rational basis.
No, no, no. I'm saying, that's the data, right? We're relying on from that one meeting.
Well, council member, that, we, the committee didn't consider data to make a decision about anything. What the count, what the committee did was hear the staff report that we had received these, these letters and that we had not had an opportunity to have any kind of a public process to gather information that we could include when we sent it to the council to make a determination about them. So in the absence of, of being able to conclusively make a recommendation on each one of those items to the council, the council committee said, "What we should do is include those items in the report and say that we don't have sufficient data at the present time, and therefore, we're going to gather data at a later date, and the council will consider at a future date whether or not they want to take a policy position on these things." That's all the committee did.
What, what is, when, when we are moving forward and trying, and we're going to gather this data, what, what is the process you envisioned to gather the data?
So I imagine we would have a meeting like this that would include all housing advocates and, you know, we'd make it open to tenants as well, and renters, as well as the individuals who are here. I mean, we're, the purpose is to gather as much information from all perspectives and then to provide that data to the council so that you then have some rational basis to say, "Well, it doesn't appear that there is a mandate for the council to act on rent stabilization, and it doesn't appear that there's a mandate for the council to do any of these particular items." So we would give you the information on which you then could make a decision, but there would be some rational basis, because there wasn't an overwhelming mandate to move in one direction or the other.
And, and will-
Or, at the same time, there might be. I mean, there might be an overwhelming mandate as a result of the process where you that might then be able to concur with the majority that you've heard tonight. We don't know. Well, you know, we'd have to open it up for more input, but you might very well come back to what you've heard tonight and decide this was a mandate once we open it up for more people to provide input to us. So all the council committee wanted us to do was include these items so that we would say, "And we'll go gather some more information, and at some future date, the council may decide to take a policy position, or not, on any one of these items." That's the only reason that we have included them there, is to say, "We'll take a look at what the public input is. We'll, we'll develop a process. We'll bring data back. And if the council chooses to make a decision, you can. You will not be obligated to make any decision. But if you wanted to, you'll have sufficient data on which to make a rational decision."
All right. Thank you so much. On the motion, can we call the question? Can we write it down? What was the motion? We had a first and a second. Can we recall the motion? Mr. Buena Ventura, do you remember?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking.
Well, there was a motion on the floor that was seconded already. This was discussion.
I'm not sure who made the motion or who seconded, but I do know it was, I believe, declining to accept the comments.
I believe the motion, I'll reread the motion. I believe the motion was from Mr. Buena Ventura that we remove the comments in the report to be submitted, items 10 through 15. And I believe it was seconded by Vice Mayor Manalo. Does that sound correct? Am I wrong or? Yes, Ms. O'Bell?
We have to indicate in the document that the comments were made, but the count, but in the column about whether we accept them or we reject them, the city can say, "We, we, we decline to accept these comments." We have to, we have to enumerate them in the document, but we can say, "We do not accept these comments."
And do we have to provide an explanation as to why we do not accept them?
Yes.
And could we use time as a factor due to the fact when it came in? And public outreach for both sides?
You can certainly put it in the report, but I can, I can tell you that it's more than likely not a rational basis. You need to have a basis as to the denial, not just the time. But we can certainly put that in the report.
All right. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call. Okay, there's a first and a second.
Mr. Gangona?
No.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Moving ahead. Thank you, Ms. O'Bell. Ms. Mothershead?
Thanks, Betsy.
All right. Item number 12, public hearing on proposed increases to solid waste collection rates for fiscal years 2018 through 2019. Mr. Chu and Ms. Martel? Mike, council?
Yeah, let's go.
Vice Mayor, you want to keep going?
Hell, yeah.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
Or maybe we can give him a chance to-
Okay.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, everyone, for participating. It's tough. Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
What's that, buddy? None, Mike. I only got one.
Thank you, Lawrence.
Thank you, sir. All right, you know what? I'm just tearing up these mics. You got to get, these are old, because when you can go like this and- These are old, because when you can go like this and, all right, thank you. Ms. Martel? How are we doing? Are we ready?
Yes, we are.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Martel. Okay, item number 12, Public Hearing on Proposed Increases to Solid Waste.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight is, the time and place established for the public hearing on proposed solid waste rate adjustments for fiscal years 2018 and 19. We have pre, prepared a PowerPoint presentation that will be a combination of the staff providing you with some details regarding the proposed rate adjustments, as well as a presentation from our consultant, Marva Shehan from HF&amp;H Consultants in Consultants. And so I'm going to, at this point, turn it over initially to Mr. Chu, who will do the introductory comments, and then we'll ask Ms. Shehan to come up and explain the actual rate adjustment.
Good evening, Mayor and council member. In 2015, the council adopted a resolution approving a 15-year franchise agreement with Republic Service. It's effective from February 2016 through June 2031. The franchise agreement provides Republic Service the right and privilege to provide solid waste and recycling services for the Daly City. The franchise agreement provides for a rate adjustment every two years. The table below shows the six rate periods in the franchise agreement. Tonight, staff is presenting the rate adjustment for rate period two, which is from July 2017 to June 2019. Now I turn over to our consultant, Marva, from HF&amp;H Consultants, to present the proposed rate adjustment.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council. So, again, I'm Marva Shehan. I am CPA and a partner with HF&amp;H Consultants with over 25 years of solid waste rate-setting and analysis, both as controller for Allied Waste and BFI, and now in consulting. So I've been doing this for a long time. As Lauren said, your agreement has a rate-setting methodology that allows for index adjustment and a comprehensive review. This year, for rate period two, we're doing an index method, and that was primarily using the CPI on Republic's proposed costs when they did the procurement. The comprehensive review method is what we will do for rate period three, which is the 2019, July 2019 through June 2021. At that point, we will be looking at their actual costs and revenues to determine the proper adjustment. And then after that, it's the indexed method for the remainder of the agreement through 2031. So Republic submitted their application using the index method. City staff and HF&amp;H reviewed the, the application. We worked together and came up with a Republic compensation adjustment that was agreed to with Republic and, and the city staff. And then we also looked at the change to the city fees, which we'll talk more about in a few moments, getting to the final proposed rate adjustment. So the rate adjustment this year has really two components. There's the first component, which is for the solid waste recycling and green waste collection services. That's the, the cost for the three trucks to come and pick up all the different materials and process, and the, the city fees that relate to those services. The second component of, of the rate adjustment is for the maintenance of the Muscle Rock landfill. And the current funding levels are not sufficient to fund the ongoing projects that are going to need to be done there. There's currently about $400,000 a year for just the annual maintenance. However, there's an estimated $11.1 million that will be needed over the next 10 years. So there's a seven million shortfall that needs to be addressed. So that, as we're showing here, we are proposing an 8% adjustment for FY '18 and FY '19 for the residential rates, and the breakout of the components are shown there, with the first year being slightly higher, because we're actually, we are delaying the rate increase should have been effective July 1st, but it's actually going to be effective October 1st, so there's a three-month delay, which causes this year's to be slightly higher. And then to bear in mind that the rates, it has been two years since the rates were last adjusted, and in fact, the last adjustment was a decrease. So it's been a while since there's been an increase to the rates here in, in the city. So just to kind of, to help keep things into perspective, of the 20, almost 22,000 rate payers in the city, 19,000 are in your 32-gallon cart. So 88% are in that rate base, and that's pretty common in terms of, especially in the residential, that that's usually where most people's service subscriptions are. So what we're, we're showing here, this is the proposed rate adjustments for the 32, 64, 96 residential, and then also for the commercial and multifamily bin services as well. The, we're doing the 8% for the single family, and, which, if we look at where the rates were, we're going to 2603. If you look from where they were on January 2013 to where we're projecting for October, it's really only a 1.8% increase in garbage rates since 2013, which is pretty, pretty amazing. The commercial and multifamily rates are going up between 8.5% and 10.4%, and that's as a result of recycling commodity revenue credits that are no longer part of the commercial multifamily rate structure. So in looking at the single-family carts, for the 32-gallon, we're looking at about $2 a month for, when, again, if you recall, that's 88% of your rate base, are looking at a $2 a month increase, or $24 a year, and the different ones for the other, the 64 and the 96. So the, the good news for the city of Daly City is if you look at where your rates stand, you are still 17% below the average for the San Mateo County, and you're 16.2% below the median of the county. Even after, when you look in the rates that we're projecting for 2018-19, at the 32-gallon will be 28-11, that's still less than the current average and current median. And these other jurisdictions will have increases effective January 1st. So you're still significantly below the average and the, and the median. And with that, my section is complete. And if anyone has any questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Martha, for the presentation. The next presenter is Richard Chu, Assistant Director of Public Work. Richard will present information on the Muscle Rock seawall repair and maintenance project.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Richard Chu, Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer for Daly City. As mentioned previously, the second component to the rate increase is the maintenance of the Muscle Rock landfill. The Muscle Rock landfill falls within the jurisdiction of the Regional Water Quality Control Board and the California Coastal Commission, and Daly City is obligated to comply with the requirements set by these two agencies. Now, the biggest concern at Muscle Rock is to prevent garbage from going into the ocean. And so these next few slides will describe the project that we're doing to make sure that we minimize the risk of that happening. The largest project and the most expensive project that needs to be done is to repair the seawall at Muscle Rock. The existing seawall material, as you can see on the lower right-hand photo, shows material that is not very durable, material that may be of insufficient size to be able to withstand the impacts of the waves. And so we're going to be using much larger rock, much more durable rock, to rebuild the seawall. Earlier this year, we did about 480 feet of seawall repair at a cost of about $1 million. There's a total of 2,200 feet more that needs to be done over the next 10 years, and that cost is about $7 million. The other component that impacts erosion is taking care of drainage at Muscle Rock. This is to prevent the soil that is on top of the garbage from being washed away and exposing the garbage. And so maintenance of the drainage system is, is critical in addition to repairing and replacing needed drainage pipes. Also with this project that we did earlier this year, we did a repair of about 600 feet of drainage pipe at a cost of about $90,000. Over the next 10 years, in terms of repair and maintenance of the drainage pipe, we'll need about, just under $1 million to, to repair and maintain the drainage. The last component in regards to large projects to be done out in the field is the gabion walls. Gabion walls basically is a large pile of rocks put into a wire cage, and those are set at the base of, of the slope to hold back the dirt and to make sure that that dirt stays where it needs to stay. Many of the gabion walls are starting to fall apart, they're leaning, the cages are resting out, and so the gabion walls do need to be replaced. In addition to having those replaced, the California Coastal Commission is requiring that we also screen the gabion walls. So for replacement and for screening over the next 10 years, we're going to need about $1.7 million to do that work. So in summary, the, the four bullets in the middle are the projects that I've just described. In addition to those projects, we have requirements from the board to monitor groundwater, monitor the gas that is from the landfill to make sure we don't have contamination. We have to do reports on a regular basis to regional board and coastal commission. That's 1.1 million dollars. And then also, the transfer station building needs to be removed at a cost of about $400,000. So in total, approximately $11 million is needed over the next 10 years. That translates into the 2.4% and the 3.7% that was previously discussed. So this concludes my presentation in regards to Muscle Rock landfill. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any question for my colleagues?
The, it's not about Muscle Rock, but maybe I can ask you about the, the garbage. So i, is the 32 or 35-gallon, that's, is that the most common that our residents have?
Yes.
Okay. And then, so that, on the average, is going to increase about one or $2 per month? Okay. And then the, the, the size up from that?
64-gallon.
Yeah, so how, how common is that? Did, do, do most residents have one of those too, or just?
No. That's just for the garbage, is the 32-gallon. And then for your others, they have 60?
1,698? That's how many?
Yeah, so you have some, 8% have that in terms of, for their garbage size. And you have your other two carts for green waste and recycling.
And that, so that, the 64-gallon one is going to go, go up about $3 or $4? Is that? $3?
76.
Okay.
What's the last one? Is it a dollar something? 578 and 6?
96-gallon cart.
That's for the, the 96-gallon.
Right, that's the big one.
That's the real big one.
How much is that one going up?
That's the six, that's how much they're going up, is the 578 per month?
578 to 625 or?
578 for this, for the 17-18, and then 18-19, it'll go up an additional $6.25.
Second, the second year of the rate adjustment.
Do you know if?
Trying to figure out, if it get the bigger one, you get the better deal.
Do you want the small one? It's the right thing to do.
Okay, I'm sorry, ma'am.
No, no, no. Is, in terms of the, how do you say, the, the options that you give the customers in terms of like a cleanup day, things like that, is, does any of that change?
No, the services that are, that were, are part of the existing agreement are continuing just the same type of services that you've been getting.
Okay. And is it? See, I, I only have the 30, I think I just have the 32-gallon one. I mean, is it, is it better that our, our residents stick to two of those or one 64-gallon one?
Ideally, it would be that they stick to 132.
Yeah, of course.
So that they recycle and reduce the waste stream that goes into their, their garbage can. So by recycling and composting and, and hopefully contributing to diverting trash away from the landfill, we would want to encourage more people to stick with the 32-gallon and try and eliminate as much of their waste as possible from garb, from going to the landfill and making sure they compost and recycle.
Okay.
And if you look at your rates, your rates are, are what we call a uniform, that a 64-gallon price is twice what 32-gallon is. So there's not a, a differential, the way your rate structure is set.
That's one penny less.
Is the, is the composting container that you guys gave out last year, are you going to be doing that again? Are you going to increase the size? What's the plan of that? Yeah, the kitchen?
No, that was provided to residents to, to kick off the program. If, if you don't have one or if the resident misplaced any, do replace them, but we don't, we won't be flaking the city with the kitchen.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Vice Mayor, did you have?
Oh, yeah, I do have a comment. So this was mentioned earlier in the report, so it's basically 17.5% below the county average. That's, that's where we're at. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Can you fill out a card for me? Huh? No, fill out a card and I'll gladly, at the back, sir. We just want to get something on file. All right.
So, Mr. Mayor, if we can complete our report before we start the public comment?
Ma'am, absolutely.
We want to advise the council about the appropriate notification that we have provided to all of our rate payers under Proposition 218.
Got it. All right.
The Prop 28 requirement, content requirement that whenever a properly related fee is imposed or increased, the government entity must provide written notice, hold a public hearing, and those who pay the fee may file a written protest. So in compliance with Prop 28 notice, notice of public hearing was mailed out on August 9th. The Prop 28 notice includes schedule of the proposed solid waste rate and instruction that written protests must be received by the city clerk prior to the close of the public hearings tonight. There are over 24,000 parcels in Daly City. 12,150 valid protests are needed in order to prohibit the proposed solid raise, solid waste increase. As of 12:00 PM today, the city clerk has received 94 written protests with Daly City address. This represent a 0.39% of the total parcels in Daly City. The map shows the protest netter by neighborhood. There are 94 protest netter from Daly City and 10 protest netter coming from Broadmoor area. 33 of the protest netter are from West Nick area. 33 of the protest letter are from West Nick area, 18 protest letter from Crockett, and 13 letter from St. Francis. This table provide an overview of the protest letter by category. The protest letter are divided into two session, Daly City and Broadmoor. There are 94 protest letter from Daly City, and the first category, opposed to the rate increase, we received 66 protest letter from Daly City and seven from Broadmoor. The second category is senior on fixed income, 17 protest letter from Daly City and only one from Broadmoor. The next category is resident who minimize the solid waste produced. The city receive eight protest letter. And the last category is poor service, poor waste disposal service, the city receive three protest letter. Now we look at the community outreach. In July, the staff present, present the proposed solid waste increase to the solid waste committee. The city council subsequently scheduled the public hearing tonight. On August 9th, Prop 28 notice will mail out to the resident and property owners. On September 14th, staff attended Daly City Labor Association meeting to provide detailed information on the proposed solid rate increase. In addition, notice of public hearing was posted on the city website, cable TV channel, and published on Examiner. Now we look at the staff recommendation. Over 88% of the total customer in Daly City are using 32 gallon cart service. If the proposed rate adjustment were implement, the rate for a typical single-family residential customer would increase by around $1.93 effective October the 1st, 2017, and a $2.08 per month increase effective June 2, 2018. And staff recommend that the city council approve the proposed annual rate increase for fiscal year 2018 and 2019 in accordance with the franchise agreement and provide the funding for the Muscle Rock site maintenance and seawall repair. And this conclude my presentation. I'm happy to answer any question that you may have.
Thank you, sir. I have one. How much, I didn't get a figure as to how much would go towards the Muscle Rock landfill projects? I mean, what would be the total amount if we were to go ahead with these?
So the estimated cost is 11 million, $11 million over 10 years.
And for the first two years, if we were to go ahead with these rate increases, how much would that help or add up towards the project? Just a roundabout figure, oh, well, do the rate increases, with 19,698 customers, we can generate, do the rate increases for the Muscle Rock, say, 2.7 million? Just a rough number. Just want to see, we're just, 1.2 million?
2 million.
Okay. So when we come up with these increases, again, we have to consider Muscle Rock, and that is an issue.
Yes. It is an issue that has to be included in this because that work is mandated.
Absolutely. Okay. How about Broadmoor? Are they responsible for paying part of this as well? Do they get this? If we decide on a rate increase, does that?
Yes, this will impact Broadmoor as well.
Okay, thank you.
They, they fall under our contract even though they are an unincorporated area.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other questions from the colleagues? My colleagues?
No.
Okay. Oh.
No, no more comments, thank you.
All right. I do have one card on this issue. I'll open the public hearing at this particular time. Thank you, Rose. Mariano Portoli, Mariano Portoli. Come on up, sir. Thank you so much.
I have just a small question. I would like to know if the city or the garbage company provide with a smaller can? Because some places in San Mateo County, they have a 26 gallon can. That's for the people doesn't have hardly any garbage. My dad lives in Redwood City, he has a 26 gallon can because hardly have any garbage. I live in Daly City since 1969. I'm just, the two of us, most of the time we eat out, hardly put my garbage out. Let's see what I know. So the reason anyway, that the company provide, the people doesn't have hardly any garbage, with a smaller garbage can. Very simple.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Tough to get an answer for you.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Martel or?
So this issue has come up many times over the years, Mr. Mayor, about whenever there has been a rate adjustment. Oftentimes in the form of the protest letters where people actually request to have smaller bins. However, by contract with Republic Services, they are not contracted to provide any carts smaller than 32 gallon.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. Did I answer your question, sir?
No.
Well, only 32 gallons. 32 gallons is the smallest.
Accepting your service.
Oh, I didn't ask that question. Can they, oh, okay, okay, I got it, got it, got it. Can, can he choose not to accept service?
No, he cannot choose to not have service.
All right. I'm sorry, Mr. Portoli. Is it, I was concerned about the senior on fixed income, do, what happens with that?
We do not offer a senior discount, unfortunately.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to move forward for...
Mr. Mayor, and I should have also added to that last comment, we do not provide a senior discount. And in large part, the reason we don't is because it would then force all the other ratepayers to subsidize that service. And we can't do that.
Thank you, Ms. Martel. I mean, we can debate, and I know some seniors probably are on fixed income and can't even pay, and, but I understand at this particular time. All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Recommended actions to adopt the resolution. Does anybody have a motion to adopt?
I'll make the motion.
First, second roll call, please.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Resolution passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to public appearances. We do have a speaker card, and I'm going to ask Ms. Dre Montano, is she still here? I saw her earlier. Dre? All right. She's not here. She wanted to speak on the American Cancer Society Relay. And part of the information I have, I think they generally hold it in San Bruno, but I think they're trying to get it here in Daly City. So worthwhile event. I hope Ms. Montana can come back and address the council on this matter. Thank you. All right. Reports, council committee reports.
Appointments first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Next item is appointments. Board, commission, membership committee appointments.
I got nothing.
You got none, Mike?
Sorry about that, I got nothing.
No, that's okay. Vice Mayor?
I do, I have, I would like to nominate Sonia Reyes for the personnel board, but, you know, she, I think it's time for new community members to be able to sit on, you know, and serve the community. And she has background and has her MPA, Masters in Public Administration, and I'd like to nominate her. But prior to that, I, I have to move on with a removal of Olga Stavinskaya. She, I sat on the personnel board with her, and when I was on council, I don't think I've even met her, and I attended all of the personnel board meetings when I was active. So I am making a motion to remove Olga Stavinskaya from the personnel board.
Second.
Okay, so we have two motions. One is a removal because you want to appoint someone else. Okay. We should take each one separate?
Yes, you may have to.
All right. Okay, so we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. On the matter to appoint, is it Sonia Reyes?
Sonia Reyes.
Second.
First and the second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Gangona?
Aye.
Mr. Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Ms. Manalo?
Aye.
Mr. Sylvester?
Aye. Is there any other appointments, Vice Mayor? Mr. Gangona, none at this time? Thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to reports, council committee reports. I think we went through already, I think your committee met with Madam Christensen and Vice Mayor, and that information was posted on the report. Did you have anything else to add? Vice Mayor?
No, Mayor.
None? Okay. Any other council committee? I have quite a few, but it's getting late, so I'm not going to go through them, but I do have one comment. It's under item number 14. So we'll move on to item 14 unless we have anything further?
14?
The city council report.
Oh.
The first was council committees.
Got it. I'll have something for that, thank you. After you.
Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the League of Cities Conference up in Sacramento, where over 1,800 officials throughout the state of California attended, to include our city manager, other city managers, vendors, and et cetera. I did manage to walk around on the conference floor and pick up a lot of swag. But this is not what I have here, and I'd like to thank Republic for being there as well. I did get a little garbage truck, and it's on my desk upstairs. But what was very important and enlightening to me is that I want to talk about Daly City, so this is going to be quick. Daly City picked up three awards. This is the Beacon Spotlight Award for Best Practices, Best Practice Activities. The city of Daly City, a gold award. So I'm going to turn this over to the city manager. The next award is a Spotlight Award for Agency Greenhouse Gas Reductions. Daly City received another gold level award, 18% agency greenhouse reductions for 2017. I see Stephen in the audience there, and I, I'll get to you in a minute, sir. And lastly, Daly City also received a gold level award for the Community Greenhouse Gas Reductions, a 10% community greenhouse reductions. And the reason I bring this up, being the first time in sitting here on council, I didn't know what goes on behind the scenes, not only from our city staff, the city manager, and all the folks here in Daly City. I want to say thank you so much for Daly City obtaining these prestigious awards. I'm also thankful to staff who have put out the necessary outreach tools to our citizens in Daly City, who by getting together, they enabled us to obtain this award. So I thank the citizens of Daly City, I thank staff, city manager, everything that you folks do. So I'm very, very impressed, and I want to say thank you so much. So with that being said, I'll turn these over.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to take the opportunity to highlight Stephen Stolti because really, the credit for all of this goes to him. And as long as we have our friends from Republic Services here, it's worth noting is, some of the members of the council may recall, at the time that we approved the franchise agreement, one of the things I requested that the council include in that franchise agreement is a requirement that Republic Services help us fund a position in my office that would work in part on compliance issues related to the garbage contract, but also would be focused on sustainability efforts to help create a more sustainable environment in Daly City. And so Stephen has done a stellar job, both working collaboratively with Republic Services to ensure that we are getting compliance under all the terms of the franchise agreement, and then working as well on a variety of sustainability issues, including broadening our effectiveness on our climate action plan. He was responsible for getting the Bloomberg Foundation grant that we have for cities of service in our, our green program, where we're planting trees in Daly City, and a variety of other activities. So this, we have been afforded the capacity to do a huge amount of work on our sustainability program because of Stephen. And we wouldn't have been able to do that on our own without some financial support from Republic Services for this position. And even though his work goes beyond just compliance on the franchise agreement, what he is doing to help the community understand about recycling, composting, and a whole variety of other sustainability issues is ensuring the future success of Republic Service in helping to reduce the amount of waste that goes to our landfills and improving our diversion rate. So good job, Stephen.
Thank you so much, Ms. Martel. And Stephen, you know, I see you every so often, and thank you so much for what you do. I'm going to turn these over to you. All right? And I'd like to thank Republic Services for everything that you do as well, and the city is very, very fortunate to have you both, especially as an asset. Thank you. Any reports from staff?
I think I've provided all the reports I need to tonight.
I have an adjourned memory.
I'm going, Vice Mayor, you have anything?
Oh, I do, I do.
On the council?
Or council, yeah, council or, not for...
Council, okay, go, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just wanted to say, over the past weekend, there was a wonderful event that I was with the mayor, the Latino Heritage Event went well, it was just very beautiful, where there was so many cultural dances, and it was really nice to be there at War Memorial. And actually, it was such a sunny day, and we said maybe one day we could have it outside because it was gorgeous last Saturday. And so for all, everyone that put the effort in, thank you for that. Also, wanted to acknowledge that there were five firefighters, and had the pleasure of meeting actually the first female firefighter that was a woman, Barbara Lewiki, who is retiring. So we have Doug Blackinies, Phil Cortijos, and Jordy Hawkins, and the woman Barbara Lewiki. And so they have retired from this, as firefighters for to save Daly City, but wanted to acknowledge them for their work as well.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Buena Ventura?
I have an adjourned memory if you're...
Okay, Mr. Gangona, anything? All right, I'll turn it over to Mr. Buena Ventura. He does have an adjourned memory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I would like us to adjourn in memory of Leo Sands.
Oh.
Mr. Sands is Commissioner Tricia Devera's stepfather. He passed away unexpectedly this month, earlier this month. He really was one of the nicest guys that I've ever had the pleasure of knowing. He's a true gentleman. And I've said this publicly, but I'd like to say it for the record, Leo, rest in peace.
Excuse me.
This world was never meant for someone as beautiful as you. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buena Ventura. And along the same lines, I'd like to adjourn in memory of all the victims of the recent hurricane in Puerto Rico and the particular islands there, and to those that have lost their... their lives. We hope condolences to everyone involved in the family. So with that being said, if we can pause for a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.